Hey, good evening. Sergeant P. Tardy in Millie Room. Call for order, the school committee meeting for July 22nd, 2013. We have an agenda. We'll start with the approval of minutes from the regular session of June 17th. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, the regular session minutes of June 17th, 2013.
Second? Second. Any discussion, questions, comments? All those that go over?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Communications?
I would say only the letter that came from the planning board emailed it to you on the other day, but I also put it at your place tonight.
That was a copy of the second amended decision?
Right.
Right. From site fine review. Correct. Okay. Questions and comments from the audience?
No.
Okay. New business. Welcome our friends from CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, to give us an update on their events of the past year. Yeah, I think I'd like to introduce the folks that are with you.
Good evening, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our report to you. My name is Marissa Ronan, and I'm currently the co-chair of the Hingham CPAC. And with me tonight is my other co-chair, Daniela Andrews-Giewich, and our former co-chair, Donna Keeney. We had a number of changes in our board this year. Daniela joined the board in the fall, as did Sonya Finney. And Daniela is co-chair, as I mentioned, and Sonya Finney came on as secretary, replacing Pam Barrigan, who resigned in the fall. Our treasurer remains, Kim Cross. And Donna Keeney and Jean Garrity retired as co-chairs in May, after many years of valued service. And we miss them very much, but they are functioning in an advisory capacity, which we very much appreciate because we dropped from six board members down to four. And we have a very inactive community, so it's really the board that carries out everything. I was formerly the public relations and outreach coordinator, and I changed my role to become a co-chair. We had another very busy year this year. I hope that you received our annual report in your package?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. You know, we do a lot of monthly events, we have speakers, we did a social event this year for the first time, which was very popular, and we did a road race. But, you know, as usual, our biggest struggle is building parent participation. That's a huge challenge for us. In addition to publishing three newsletters and doing the presentations and coffees, we also have a website and a Facebook page, which gets a lot of activity. And we also started a private support group for parents, which was very well-received and will continue that in the fall. This year, we also established a grant process that was open to all Hingham Public Schools staff, and we received nine grant requests, most of which were for iPads. And we have a very small budget, so we awarded one grant. And we did, that grant was to the occupational therapy staff at the elementary schools. And it was for iPads, as well as some applications and miscellaneous accessories. And the, you know, again, we have a very small budget. We're not like HEF or any of the other organizations. But our objective was to try to impact the largest number of students that we could. And by awarding the grant to the occupational therapy staff, we were going to benefit the most students at the elementary schools. We did have applications from all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Also this spring, three members of the board, myself, Daniela and Sonya, as well as Liz Flynn, and a CPAC parent, attended a three-day Apple Institute, which stands for Advancing Parent Professional Leadership and Education. And it's presented by the Federation for Children with Special Needs. It was a three-day workshop in which we did a number of exercises and team-building, but we also developed some very specific short-term goals for our CPAC, which included basically rebranding ourselves and coming up with a new logo and motto and new marketing materials, again, in an effort to try to raise awareness of our organization and increase participation. We also are going to be developing an agenda with regard to working with school administration and also hoping to learn more about the special education subcommittee of the school committee. And we're also going to be developing sort of a site map of all special education services in Hingham that will be available to parents because we find that people are not aware of what is available. You start to find out bits and pieces where people don't have an overview of what special education offers in Hingham. One other thing, in addition to, you know, developing these goals through the Apple Institute, and in talking with, I think there were seven other school districts there, we learned that, pleasantly learned, that we're actually very well-organized relative to other CPACs, and that we have a positive relationship with our Director of Student Services, which is not something to be taken for granted, and that we actually have a budget and we have money, which is something that most CPACs do not have. And, you know, the fact that we do have a very small budget of money that we have raised allows us to bring in speakers such as, this fall, we have Sarah Ward coming in to do a presentation on executive functioning, and there will be a staff portion to that as well. And that's always a huge draw for parents. So just to, you know, go back, I mean, participation continues to be our biggest challenge, and we find that parents don't want to be identified with our organization, for whatever reason. Either they're embarrassed, or they're in denial that their children actually have some kind of a special need, or there are negative emotions toward the district if there's been some sort of a conflict or disagreement about level of services. But it's very, very challenging to get parents to come forward and talk with us, and certainly to participate and help us out. And the interesting thing is, and something that we've been trying to communicate more to people, and it was in one of our newsletters last year, is that the majority of special education students in Hingham are those who have a specific learning disability. And that might be something like dyslexia or ADHD. And those things are not necessarily apparent to a typical adult. You might, you know, not necessarily notice that there's something kind of quirky about that child. And I think that most people, when they think about special education, are thinking about children who are really obviously disabled. And then, of course, there's the issue of the out-of-district placements, which are very expensive, they're few in number, but they're very expensive, so that comprises a very big number in the school budget. And that sort of gets the attention. But that is a really small piece of what special education is. And I can tell you, I have two boys, they both are on IEPs, and I think if you met them, you would be really surprised because you wouldn't, you can't tell. And that's the case with most children who receive special education services. And, you know, the interesting thing about that, too, is that a lot of the programs that benefit those students benefit the general population in the school as well. So things like social skills programs. A lot of children who have learning disabilities are very, they lag in social skills, where most children just intuit social skills and how to behave and body language, et cetera. But, you know, for our children, it has to be taught explicitly. And so I know for myself, I've spent years bringing my kids to social skills groups so that they learn, how do you play with somebody? How do you say, "Well, I really hate that," to yourself, but not actually say it out loud? Or, you know, you get a birthday present and you don't go, "I already have one of these," you know? So, you know, things like that, that, like I said, most children, you know, they learn that without you having to explicitly teach that. There are a lot of kids who need social skills instruction. So, you know, a lot of things that special ed children need, and these are the ones who are not the obviously disabled ones, benefit the entire population. So that's something that we're really interested in, is things that, you know, can be implemented that are going to benefit everybody. So, you know, with that, you know, we look forward to another very busy and productive year, helping parents navigate special education. We're going to be continuing our outreach. And, you know, we believe that every child's education is special. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're grateful that you've come back. We certainly welcome involvement, with your group more involvement, increased involvement and try our chairs our special education subcommittee. You know, I'm sure we'll be happy to spend some time with you and as we move forward, looking at different things and ways that we can assist you in that outreach, in that coordination of effort with parents who might be a little hesitant. Certainly, that's understandable, but I would imagine there are plenty who don't realize what is available to them, and if they just stepped out a little bit, maybe they would be pleasantly surprised if the support is there.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's a challenge. And Ed is our liaison, and Liza is the alternate. We appreciate that very much. We look forward to children to do some of the things together.
Great. Well, thanks again. Any questions or comments from folks?
I would comment, I had the opportunity to attend a couple of meetings last year and get a little more aware of what is being done, and I'm absolutely amazed at the level of activity and the amount of work that gets done by a relatively small group for the benefit of a much larger group. So I would applaud all of you, Donna in particular, and your other co-chair, that have been involved for a very long time. I don't know how you get to retire again. But maybe there's a legal option, but seriously, just a tremendous amount of work that goes in, and I think you guys have done a great job. I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
I would just comment that I did check your Facebook and website today, and that was great. And I would think that would be a great way to get people who might feel a little timid at first to learn about what's going on, but both great sites and lots of great information.
It's a slow process. It's a really slow absorption rate.
Keep chugging.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We are joined this evening by Kim Smith, who's our food services director. And she and John are going to talk about our program, the changes in the past year with respect to the point-of-sale system, food improvements, the overall program, where we are, where we're going, where we want to be, where we hope we can be. So, John, please.
Thank you, Ray. Actually, Kim has put together this great presentation, but the first couple of slides have to do with an overview of the finances for fiscal 2012, 2013. So I thought I'd come up and present the finances, and then Kim will take the podium and go over the elements of the program and, you know, where we've been, where we've headed, a number of our successes, and the challenges that we face going forward. So with that, is it just this button, or is it just any button?
Mine.
So fiscal 13 started out, we were very optimistic at the beginning of the year. We were looking at the implementation of a new POS system coming online. It found out to be in the summertime. You know, under the leadership of Kim, revitalizing the program, coming up with additional menu choices after having gone through a number of focus groups in the previous year. You know, and then we got actually hit by the regulation change by the governments, which actually took a little damper on operations, at least for a good portion of the start of this year and lagging into the end of the year. By end of year, things started to see, we may be seeing some glimmers of hope. We're hopeful that we are. However, you know, by taking a look at the financials, total revenues down $94,000 year-over-year. Student lunch, and I've broken this up here, so you've got student lunch sales, and then you have student alacard sales. So that's all student stuff. Now, you know, those two numbers don't equal the total, so the residual is really government reimbursement and also adult meals and other miscellaneous small types of revenues. Okay? Governments being the biggest shot of that, you know, over $100,000 when you look at government reimbursement.
And John, if we could just clarify, so is it for each lunch from the feds, we get 38 cents and 2 cents from the Commonwealth, so it's total 40 cents reimbursement, isn't that right? For each $2.75 lunch?
Yeah. Yeah, for each reimbursable.
For every lunch, whether it's high school, however it's priced, every lunch, every level?
Yeah. And that's a reimbursable lunch. That would be the first lunch that a child may buy or a student may buy that day. So high school students, if they buy two lunches in a day, we do not get that 40 cents on the second.
Second.
So it's just for the first reimbursable lunch. And Kim will go over what the components of those things are during her portion of the presentation. So I wanted to show this, so the deficit before entries to the operating budget. So, you know, we have an enterprise fund for the food service account, and the enterprise fund, we try to flow all the expenses through it, including supervision, overhead, repairs to equipment, purchases of new equipment, and then also an assistant. So before we make adjustments, if we looked at the business, and, you know, as a business, and it's really difficult to do because we're actually required to have this business, you know, this business lost $108,000 this year, $89,000 the previous year, for a change of an additional $19,000 year-over-year. Now, that doesn't include health insurance either. I mean, you know, so it'd be a long time in coming before food service, you know, looks and acts like what you may think is a business out there. You know, it's a school food service program. Other programs across the country face similar bouts. Meals sold, you can see they're reduced by 17,000 meals year-over-year, okay? And that was because, at the very beginning of the year, students said, "Hey, this doesn't fill me up," and they just stopped buying lunches. You know, right from the get-go, our lunch counts were down, although the menu, I thought, was much improved. I've been to lunch at the high school, I enjoy lunch at the high school, it does a good job filling me up, but I guess I'm just a little person opposed to some of the bigger people, but, you know, there is hope, some of the favorites have actually gotten back, and I'll let Kim take that up. Overall, participation for the district, so we're down 2.67 percent. Now, I checked the blog for the School Nutrition Association as of April 23rd of 2013, and across the country, paid meals, paid meals are down over 9.39 percent across the country. So we dropped 2.67 percent, which I think is, you know, you hate to see a loss, but I don't, I think it fares well compared to the other 9.39 percent, which could have potentially been the damage. So, you know, and I think that at the tail end of the year, that number seemed to be churning up a bit. We started seeing volumes increase for, you know, just about across all schools. So I'm optimistic that things will get improved. So let me go back to the deficit before the operating, just so everybody knows, the business will run the business, but at the end of the day, that account can't equal zero, okay? So the operating budget has to make up that deficit. So typically, what I do is I make journal entries, and I reverse out something like Kim's salary, and I take the secretary's salary, reverse those out, and I take the equipment maintenance and repair type aspect things, which have to do with the infrastructure of the business, and I reverse those out in order to make that account liquid. So that's where, you know, when you look at the actual enterprise account, at the end of the year, we'll always have a positive balance because it really should, at the end of the year, always have a positive balance. You can't run a fund and then it isn't. So the operating budget, you know, whether, if we lose money, it's the operating budget that ultimately absorbs it. And actually, this year, I've actually asked Pat Veely and my accounting supervisor at PAP to set up an account structure in food service in my books, so at least I have some other place to charge those. Right now, the books don't have that.
So, John, I have a question.
Sure.
So this 108, 415, that was already absorbed in the variance that you reported at our last meeting?
That will be, yeah, that's absorbed, yeah.
So that's included, so we still?
Yeah, the variance that we would have with individual is still intact, yes. This isn't additive to that. I had mentioned that would be offsets to food service at that time, too, so.
And why is it just to clarify, any of your budget and variance, you know, it's not a snapshot as of June 30th. It often takes two, three months to settle the accounts and come up with a complete number that reflects, you know, either the positive or negative variance. So, you know, as John settles the books for the end of the fiscal year that happened, you know, three weeks ago, you know, that number will evolve. And some of the revenues haven't even posted yet, you know, then you look at the expenses and, you know, journal entries go on to like clear out the accounts, because we just, we spend money and then we have to make sure that we get the account classification correct.
Okay. I was just looking at what we were given at the last meeting.
Yeah. All that is still intact, yes. All that is still intact, and perhaps a little more.
Yeah, I didn't notice any comment in that document that you provided us about covering food service. You may have verbally said it, but it wasn't in the thing you handed out.
Okay. It may have been.
So that's why I'm saying.
Often, I talk about the, I do try to articulate the item. Okay.
So, John, so if I understand this, let me get too deep into the numbers, the problem here is really participation, right? So we, if we have greater participation, we make enough money on individual meals that we could have a profit. But right now, we don't have enough participation, or we're not doing enough meals to absorb the overhead.
Correct, yeah. I estimate, Dennis, if we had a 36 percent participation, we'd eat up those deficits.
Okay.
And I think it's doable. I think, I absolutely believe that it's doable here. I mean, you know, we used to be up there, and I think we will get back into those times. I mean, we have an improving economy, we have an improving program. And, you know, actually, let me go to this next slide, okay? Because this next slide is, you know, where we look at the participation in the meals sold. So, you know, we said 20, average cost, $3. I mean, right now, we're at $2.75 at the elementary, $3 at the middle school, $3.25. But then, there's a whole bunch of alacard items, too, okay? So it's hard to get to an average cost, but if we just take the midpoint here and say $3, we sold 180,000 meals. What we would have needed to sell was 216,000 meals, okay? So if we sold an additional 36,000 meals, that would have made us break even. And that's really roughly about a 5.2 percent increase in participation. So I say 35 percent, you know, 35, 36 percent, I think we'd be in good shape at that level of participation. The, some of the, now, the indicators, too, so we just implemented this POS system, and I think, you know, on a positive front here, if we look at the parent online participation, those parents that have embraced have gone online to the POS parent online and said, "Oh, let me look and see what my kid's eating, let me charge them up," or, "Let me at least see how they're doing," and we're there spending the money that I give them every day for lunch, okay? You know, going to 28.6 percent, we implemented in November. I mean, Kim and I took numerous snapshots over the year, and it's gone up from 15 percent to 22 percent to 25 percent, you know, at the end of the year, now we're at 28 percent. And then, if you look at the number of students with dollars on their account, so there's students at the end of the year, they have dollars on their account, and that money will just roll over to them next year, okay? That's a 36.4 percent. So now, I would suggest that if we get those two numbers up, if that goes to 35 percent or 40 percent, then the kids' balances go up to 42 percent. De facto, it's going to be, "I have money on my account, this food's not so bad, I like it, I'm going to eat some more," okay? That's where, I mean, ideally, I think that will happen. And I think when you see some of the offerings that Kim's had, and when you hear her, I mean, it's absolutely doable. I think the program's under major revitalization, and I think that this, you know, and later on, we're going to talk about increasing prices for fiscal 14, and I think that that investment will in fact help us continue the momentum, I think, that we've started to continue. So with that, I think I'm going to invite Kim up to kind of go over the, unless there's additional questions on the finances. Just wanted to, I wanted to kind of let you know where this operation is, and I'll be here, so other questions come up, I may interject if need be.
So the only question I have, only other question, maybe we'll talk about this later, is that in terms of pricing?
Yes.
Is there, not to get too esoteric about it, but the elasticity of demand, in other words, if the price went from $3 to $3.4, or if it went from $3 to $3.50?
Yep.
Would we see the impact? And if so, if we increase prices, would we be able to offer something that would be more attractive? Or maybe there's a way to do it. I see you have like extra sundry things and that kind of, maybe that's the way to go. But the more attractive you make it, I'm guessing that in our community, the pricing is not as big an issue as getting the kids interested and offering them an attractive item. I don't know if you agree with that or not, but.
I think it's always a combination there. I think there's always a combination there. So there is, will always be price elasticity. I mean, in this package and the proposal, as we thought about the structure of the rates, we wanted to make it so that kids could get enough to eat without having to be overly burdened and having to buy two lunches all the time, okay? Which now, you get up to $7, $8, $9, $10 a day. My son happens to be one of those. I just think, well, can't you just do one lunch, you know? But, so there is some price, there is, you know, you do hit a level where you're saying, you know, "I can't do $10 every day for your lunch, so can't you get this and the extra?" So there would be a little bit of that. And then, there's some incentive built in such that, you know, the second meal, if they have the second unreimbursable, we're actually proposing to charge that higher because we want to make up for the 40 cents we're not getting, because we need every penny out of these meals that we get in order to ultimately make this a viable business. So we can talk more about those budgets, and I can add to it.
Yeah, and just kind of, you know, put it in a little bit of context. You know, remember when we looked at bringing the point-of-sale system in, we knew that this was not going to be, you know, an immediate thing. We knew it was going to take a little bit of time to turn things around. And Kim, you know, when she came in here, she started addressing the program, the structure, the menu, choices, what we could do. Point-of-sale system was another aspect of that. And I think, you know, it's, how do we keep the program going in a way that doesn't lose money while we seek to improve the program so that it can be self-sustaining, you know?
Right. Darren lies the rock.
And we, in addition to phasing in the point-of-sale system, we also were faced with new guidelines, which reduce the amount of food that we're giving to kids. So when John talks about his son, who's in high school, not having a, you know, my son, who's about to be in fifth grade, can't eat the lunch either because it's not enough food for him, and he's only 10. So we have to find a way to solve that.
I think it's difficult, because you start, you're feeding the same amount of calories to a first grader as you do to a fifth grader, who is generally just hitting and getting into that growth spurt. It's difficult, but as we go through the presentation, I think we've tried to find a way to solve that problem. But first things first, I want to say thank you, because I'm going into my third year here, and I have to say that the support that I've received from the administration, the committee, and just the community altogether. There's a list of folks here that I really wanted to take the time to acknowledge their contribution, that they, you know, we have chefs, and we have nutritional professionals, and we have, you know, moms and dads, and, you know, it's just the amount of people and the variety of the folks that have offered me input and have given me feedback and have allowed me to kind of take the pulse of where the community that have offered me input and have given me feedback and have allowed me to kind of take the pulse of where the community is. I work, you know, I feel like I work for the community and those are the folks, those are my clients. The kids are who I take care of and the community is my client. Um, and so there's a, there are a number, and this has grown. Um, you know, we, it started out as a small community and then others have, have come in. These folks helped when we did the point-of-sale. They had volunteers that came in and helped the kids at the registers with their numbers and, um, you know, really gave some direction. Uh, they were, some of them, we call them the PIN number police at the middle school and the high school. So we get them to get their numbers and get their stuff together. Um, but as you see, it's quite a few folks and even more so. I mean, even responses to my emails I send out to parents and so on and so forth, so, thank you. Um, so what's cooking, it's kind of my little subject thing that I send out to my little emails. Um, and what I try to keep in mind is that the focus is about educating and modeling the best way to fuel the body and the mind. You know, school lunch is the perfect model for students to see, smell, touch, and experience proper nutrition. That's how kids learn. They see it, they experience it, they touch it, that's how they get to learn. And I'm fortunate enough to be able to be a part of that. This is the bagel lunch. This is actually at Foster. And we, it's a different variety, tomato soup, we've got, um, whole grain bagel, yogurt, cheese stick, um, a veggie boat there with fresh homemade hummus. So, you know, we try to give them a variety and give them options to choose. Um, this is the pizza. Um, and then, you know, we have a variety of fresh fruit. We offer, um, whole fruit in addition to, you know, canned fruit just to kind of offset some of the cost as well as give them some options. Um, and we have our pizza, which is, our pizza is specifically made, thank you. No, that's fine, that's good for me. I don't know about anybody else.
Yeah, well, yeah.
There we go, alright. Um, so the pizza is made with low sodium cheese and it's a whole grain crust and it is made specifically for school food service. And then fresh salads. Kids in Hingham like salads, they'll eat salads, so we serve a lot of salad. This is the buffalo calzone. This was something we were able to bring back when the government kind of lifted the ceiling on the grains and proteins. We had to kind of do away with it, but this is actually at the middle school, served on that nice oval platter. And this is the, um, chicken Caesar salad. We served it with flatbread and a couple slices of mellow. This was at the high school. I mean, I don't think you could get a better salad at Bertucci's. This is kind of what I have for you guys out on the desk. It's a little sampling, it's just a little bit. Yours is more based on the elementary school lunch. Um, but this is the box lunch and it has every component for a reimbursable meal. We called it the box lunch, grab and go. You know, it, this, we tried to really market this towards the athletes for something for them to be able to put in their backpack for later. Um, I have concerns about that. But you don't have the carrots, because believe it or not, I went to the supermarket because we don't have any bad carrots in the schools anymore and the supermarket doesn't sell bad carrots. This is the Dr. Seuss birthday meal that we did. We did a one fish, two fish theme. Whereas in previous years, we've always just served a cookie. So I tried to make it fun and healthy for them. And then this is the grab and go grilled chicken salad at the high school, made fresh daily. And then this here is the chef salad also at the high school. This is the garden salad, which we made both at the middle school and the high school. It's, it's made in a salad container and they can, they can grab it as they come through. And again, it's, it's made fresh every day. This is the lunch munchies. Believe it or not, this is one of the kids' favorites. And I usually put this on as a second choice at the elementary level with pizza, gives them a, a good variety. And this is basically kind of what you have in front of us. I also was thinking in regards to that box lunch, if you were to go to Starbucks and look at what they have put in their case, that's what you would get. So I, I try to kind of base it on what kids might be familiar with, with what's out, out there on the market. Um, this is how the line is set up, um, for our bagel day for Plymouth River. So you see all that, there's the cheese sticks, the celery, the carrot sticks. There's four different varieties of fruit that are, that are out for them to select. Um, and basically, they come through and the staff kind of guises along and, and helps them to build a nutritious tray. And then there's my bible. We just try to make things fun and the kids got a kick out of it. It was, it was a good day. So, this year's, our successes that we've had in the program is we've had, you know, as much fresh local produce as we possibly could. Um, actually during the season, I would order and pick it up from the farmer's market and weigh it over the weekend and bring it to one of the schools and then bring it out to them. Um, another, uh, what ends up happening is you get a lot of networking. And so, the, a farmer from Situate called me out of the blue and he's like, hey, you want some peppers? And I said, sure, you got peppers? I said, how are they? He went, great. He brings them and basically I blanched and froze them so we could serve them another day because it was not, I couldn't really keep them, they don't last forever unfortunately. Um, we changed over to paper products. Not only is it responsible, but it does make the food look much better than stuff. Um, we use the platters instead of trays at the middle and the high school. I really am trying to convey a less institutional feel about the service. I don't want it to, I don't know a better way to say it, but it's like, I don't want it to feel like they're going through a line at the penitentiary getting their, their meal. You know, I want them to feel like comfortable and I want them to feel, you know, that they have a, you know, a part in this. Um, and the new point-of-sale system with the PIN numbers, it's better, more accurate accountability. Parentonline.net portal gives the ability for better communication with parents, which has been great for me. Um, you know, when there's been a dispute about the account, I go, let's look at it together. So I can see what you're seeing and we're all looking at the same thing and we can, we can figure it out. Um, so better communication with the community. Um, I have been, for the, the last, I'd say, four or five months, I started, um, doing a mass email to the, with the elementary parents through the student portal. And I have found out that we're working on getting that updated, um, so that I have more access to more parents within the elementary schools. Um, and that's given me a lot of feedback because people will take the time to, to email me back, which is great. Um, we've put articles in the Hingham Journal, we've had a couple. Um, we did open houses last year and I'm gonna do those again this year. Uh, and I did, um, do some speaking at a few of the PTO meetings. Our obstacles, and it wasn't an easy year for us in food service. We had finished the year at a financial loss and I contributed that to weight many different factors. Um, the nutritional regulations, yes, they're better for us. Um, and for the most part, I agree with what they have put out there. But the way they went about making the changes was too hard and fast. It wasn't a gradual thing and hence we ended up with backlash from the student population. Social media, I don't know if anybody saw the YouTube video of the kids passing out for not getting enough food. Um, that was out there for a while.
Well, we'll see it tonight when we go home.
I mean, he was very entertaining, which is not, not real, it's not realistic, but yes, it's true. Um, escalating food prices. Uh, and mother nature was not kind to us this year as far as growing seasons. We always droughts and fires and you name it, whatever could go wrong, the mother nature had happened, which impacted the cost of food and of course, gas prices. Then there's, uh, you know, we offered more food vegetables, uh, which was more expensive. Uh, and then the cost of paper products over, over the styrofoam, which it's almost doubled. Paper is almost doubled than the styrofoam. Uh, participation, which is kind of one of our meters. Uh, participation is a percentage of students that participate in school lunch program. So I hope everybody is clear on that. Um, with all the new regulations, social media focused on student and school lunch. We started with a down, down with Trent, um, September was, you know, I, with the regulations, I was very stringent. I created the menus that they were, um, very adherents to, to the regulations. And then as time went on, you find out, oh, well, this is acceptable, oh, this is acceptable. Like I served a chicken parmesan over wilted spinach greens, um, which I thought was fantastic and fabulous and it looked wonderful, but it didn't go over very well. Um, so, September didn't start off that well. Um, but as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education lifted the ceiling on protein and grains, we were able to gradually turn that trend around. Let's face it, culturally, that's how we eat. And you can't change a culture just by saying, this is how you should eat. It, it takes time. The savings that school lunch offers for you. So the cost to replace an average school lunch, if you were to go to Stop &amp; Shop, it would cost you about three dollars and fifty-four cents. And I use chicken nuggets because chicken nuggets district-wide is still a big favorite for everybody. Um, and then over here on the right, you know, what we, what you pay. So it would cost you three dollars and fifty-four cents to replace that lunch. But at the elementary school, it's two dollars and seventy-five cents. Three dollars at the middle school, three dollars and twenty-five cents. And comparatively, if you go to Panera and you were to get a sandwich aside and a drink, it's eight dollars and sixty cents. It's gonna be eight hundred and thirty kilocalories with eighteen, eighty milligrams of sodium. And a quarter pounder of big, uh, value meal at McDonald's is six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Eight hundred and thirty kilocalories and thirteen, forty milligrams of sodium. Now that's only three items. That's a sandwich aside and a drink. Whereas in school lunch, you get, you get your protein, you get your grain, you get your vegetable, you get your fruit, and you get your, your drink. Um, if you notice, I'm just gonna touch a little bit on the nutrition. Um, this was a difference this year with the, with the range. Whereas previous it was, and it was a little bit higher. I would say, you know, it was maybe fifty calories higher across the board. So we didn't really reduce calories by that much nutritionally. Um, and, uh, the sodium is the max. And then what they're doing with the sodium is come twenty seventeen, eighteen, they're expecting for us to drop that again. Uh, but they need to allow, obviously, we need to introduce kids to that. Um, and we also need to allow the manufacturers time to basically redevelop their recipes in order to still be able to offer us product. Um, so, moving on, what it costs us to make a school lunch. Um, on the low, it costs us a dollar thirty-two. These costs don't include labor. This is just the bare cost. Um, and that's probably a grilled cheese, a bagel, or a pretzel meal. Um, and then the average would be like the nuggets, the pizza, the calzones, cost us about two dollars and seven cents. And on the high end would be like the chicken parm, the chicken broccoli and ziti. It's gonna cost us about two dollars and eighty-two cents.
So a lot of people probably don't realize, but having grown up in the restaurant business, that, you know, you figure your food cost is maximum forty percent at a restaurant?
Yeah.
Often more than thirty percent. So if your cost is two dollars, that means retail would be about five dollars, five to six dollars.
And you wanna, with these, with these costs, you wanna be offering a variety on your menu. So you have a mix, so that, you know, you get a better average cost, so that you can offer more expensive things. Um, so our proposed prices for fiscal year fourteen at the high school, we have, um, we basically wanna go up a quarter across the board. Uh, and then, when it comes down to the non-reimbursable lunch, the second lunch, we wanna ask them to pay that additional forty cents that we would be losing in the reimbursement. So, um, three fifty for the lunch, they come through a second time and get a full lunch, it's three dollars and ninety cents. Milk, we brought down. We pay the same price for milk all the way across the board. It's, costs us the same to sell it at an elementary as we do at the middle. So, um, John and I discussed it, it didn't really make sense for us to, to be at sixty-five cents. My manager at the high school had actually suggested that we bring it back down to fifty cents. She felt like we would sell more milk. I would rather sell two milks than just one. And for a dollar, um, they would probably buy it, but they probably wouldn't buy the second one for, was it that a dollar or thirty?
Five and a quarter.
Yeah, um, and then for the deli bar, we went up a quarter. Um, and again, the second lunch, that ninety cents. Fruit, we kept the same. The single a la carte, we went up to three twenty-five. You used to be able to get it for two fifty. That basically is if they come through the line and they wanna buy just a hamburger or just a chicken sandwich, or it would cost them two dollars and fifty cents. We're charging the three dollars and twenty-five cents because we want to encourage them to buy the full meal. For an additional quarter, they get the whole meal, which is, you know, we're an education-based, we want them to get the, you know, if they, they, let's say that they're most likely, especially at the high school, if they're a boy, they're gonna drink the milk. They're gonna have the sandwich. You know what? They might grab that piece of fruit and they may have that piece of fruit before they head off to practice and throw it in their bag, which will be nice. Um, extra main, we kept the same at the dollar seventy-five.
Hey, Kim, so kind of interesting, okay? So really, we're, we're trying to discourage them from just going up and getting a hamburger. We want them to go up, get the hamburger, the fruit, the milk, and, and eat good. I mean, we want them to eat healthy.
Well, make the distinction between single a la carte and extra main.
What's the difference?
Well, the extra main is, if you were to come through the hot lunch and it was tacos that day, um, as you're coming through the line, you can ask for an extra side. So they would give you an extra serving of the taco for, so it's two tacos at the high school. You would get an additional two tacos for a dollar seventy-five. So, you know, you get the three fifty and the dollar seventy-five, you know, you're looking at four twenty-five.
Five and a quarter.
Five and a quarter, sorry, five and a quarter. Um, for, you know, four tacos, your fruit, your vegetable, your milk.
How's that different from a single a la carte of just the hamburger?
If they went up and say the sing, that single a la carte?
You cannot, you can't just go through the main line and just get tacos. You have to get the whole meal, number one, number, because of regulations. Um, and then the, the other issue is that, um, we're basically trying to encourage them to buy the healthy thing and not just get the burger.
So, so Liza, then, they just literally come up and they'll just buy, if in this case, just two tacos. They come and buy two tacos and they won't take the milk, they won't take the fruit. That's, that's the three twenty-five, but if they came up, they bought the, the three fifty lunch and they say, they want two more tacos, they could have four tacos for five and a quarter. So we're trying to put, we, it's actually structured to disincentivize buying just the single item.
It's hopefully to entice them to come through the line because they can get more for their buck by going through the main line versus going through the a la carte side.
How does the deli, what's the deli lunch compared to the? Do you always offer a deli sandwich? Is that the idea?
Well, at the high school, we have a deli bar, which, um, their sandwich is made to order. So as the kids come in, they place their order, they make the sandwich to order.
And then you get, is it just the sandwich or do you get the fruit and?
You get the fruit, the milk, the, it's a, it's a whole reimbursable meal. And actually, next year, we're adding a second deli bar because it's very popular. And I think just by asking, offering that second deli bar, we'll sell an additional fifty lunches at the high school per day. So, um, I'm, I, I almost wanna guarantee, but I'm not gonna do that. Because if I do, then it won't happen. Uh, then we have, you know, the salads that I showed you, we have a large and a small salad. The, the large salad is a reimbursable meal. Um, and then we have the extra dressing, uh, you know, basically, we had like blue cheese dressing and things like that. It was getting a little excessive, so we had to put a charge on that. Our snack room, we didn't really, um, go up too much on too many things. Um, you know, the water, we kept at a dollar. Premium water is, um, basically flavored water or the flavored seltzer water. That's all I'm able to sell. I can't sell Gatorade. It just doesn't meet the, the state requirements. It just doesn't meet the, the state requirements. So, that's my only other option. We have the bagel. We went up a little bit on the, whether they want sun butter or cream cheese. Sun butter and jelly, we kept the same. Because it's, it's something that the, the athletes will actually buy and throw into their backpack and have later. And I really want to encourage them to have something before they head into practice. The box lunches are reimbursable meals, so that's up. The Greek yogurt, it, we, they like the Greek yogurt. I love serving that Greek yogurt. It is expensive for us to bring in, which is why we went up a little bit. The cookie, we went up, I'd rather them, if they saw the increase in the, in the cookie and didn't see an increase in the pretzel, my hope is that they would be more likely to get the pretzel than the cookie. And same with the bars. Snack bag, we had a couple of different prices on the snack bag. And really, rather than go up, we just said, okay, let's just make all snack bags a dollar. And that would be like baked chips, Stacy's chips. All those things are a dollar. So, they come in different varieties, and they can, they come in different sizes. So, we just said, let's just do one price, rather than go up a quarter for each one. Make things simple. And then, we have the middle school. And then, on the same premise, here, we didn't do an extra main at the middle school level like we had done at the high school. So, we're going to introduce that to the middle school next year. And we're keeping it, we're going to stay at the $1.75. Because basically, their serving sizes for their main dish is the same as that at the high school. So, we're going to keep that at $1.75. Again, the cookie, we're trying to discourage them buying the cookie versus buying something, some other helpful snack. We have our salad, the Greek yogurt is the same price, the water, the premium water. The pretzel and the bagel is a dollar. The cereal, we went up, you know, 25 cents. I'd rather them buy a pretzel or a bagel for a snack rather than cereal. They do like to buy cereal for a snack. They'll just buy the cereal and the snack on it. Don't have a problem with it. But I'd just rather them have a pretzel or a bagel versus cereal. At the elementary level, it's a little simpler. Because we don't offer too, as many options for them. We went up the quarter, we kept the milk the same, we kept the fruit the same. They can come through and just buy a piece of fruit if they like. This is where we're hoping to be able to satisfy that need for the, the fourth and fifth grade students. Where we're offering, they did not get that option at all last year. But this year, they could get an extra, an extra main for a dollar. I, I have to meet regulations. I have to stay within the means of what my nutritional guidelines. This is a way for us to kind of offer more without actually having to menu that item. And we do sell small waters. We were selling it last year for 50 cents. I would rather them buy milk than a bottle of water. So, that's the idea of the 75 cents versus 50 cents. Now, the adult purchases, if they just buy the regular meal, this year it was $4. We went up a quarter. And these prices do include tax. The adults are subject to tax, meal tax. The extra main elementary, so basically, if they want to get an extra serving, we would sell that meal for them to, for $5.25. And then, at the high school, because it's a bigger portion, it would be the additional $1.75. And then, the deli would go up a quarter, the a la carte would go up a quarter, the milk would stay the same, and the extra dressing would stay the same. So, because a lot of teachers will come through and just want to buy dressing for their salad that they brought from home. So, that's my little man. This, the POS system has provided the program with death, with data, better accountability and communication. We now have data to support better menu development and purchasing. The filing of reimbursements can now happen at a point. Click and Parent Online gives parents the ability to see what their kids are purchasing. It's just been nice to actually go back and if someone says, you know, you know, gee, Kim, I only have 100 of these items, or I only have two cases. I don't know that I have enough. I think I'm going to need to place an order. Hold on. I can go right to the POS. I can go back, and I can see the last time that we served that item. And I can actually tell them, you know what? The last time we menued this item, we sold 125. You have plenty there in, with the two cases. I think we can go without having to place an order. And so, it helps really with, with purchasing. When I'm, when I'm putting menus together, seeing what, what's taken off, what, you know, what has grown. We had a grilled chicken sandwich on the menu all year long at the high school. And I really wanted to look at that and watch it and monitor it. And it did. It started off here, and it kept going and going up and up and up. So, I knew that that was an item that was starting to catch on. Now, this year, I had it on bacon. Next year, I won't put it on bacon. And then, we have a journey of 1,000 miles begins with a single step. I always say, you know, change doesn't happen overnight. It takes, when you do change in small steps, it's change that takes and holds. And this year has been a very proactive moment to reach out and build a partnership with parents regarding the various needs of our students. School nutrition can now help to continue to build on the foundation that parents have started home. The extra revenue from the proposed price increase will allow us to continue to focus on growing and expanding the program and educating our students about food and nutrition. There is more to food than just feeding yourself. And that's it, folks. Thank you, Sal.
So, based upon the proposed increases?
Yes.
I'm guessing that, I'm sure John developed a pro forma that would say what we expect our bottom line to be for next year?
At 30%, yes, we could.
So, the 118,000 whatever loss this year, with the, with these increases in your expectation of participation, would turn to what next year?
That number, I don't have calculated right now, Dennis. No.
It's patient, right?
No, I said, but they're, you know, Kim has suggested that, you know, we're going to.
Well, based on.
Whatever, whatever she's hoping to get. I'm just trying to get a sense for which direction we're moving.
This is what I, um, based on what, if we hit the 208,000 times the $3.25, I'd. I, I think we'll finish in the black. How much in the black? I, I don't want to even go there.
See, yeah, Dennis, I'm projecting, I mean, to be conservative, I'm projecting about a 1.5% growth. I mean, I'd love to get to 35, but we've been trying to get a 5% increase in participation for two years. I've been saying it. I think more realistic is can I get a 1.5%? So, about a 30%? That would be 208. We could certainly cost that out and do that analysis. We don't think, we, we need, we know we need to get to 34, 35% in order to be profitable. I didn't do the, I didn't do the full projection on it. I thought about doing it, but I did not.
I'm not suggesting that we should turn that, that 100-plus thousand-dollar loss into a break-even or a profit this year. That'd be nice. But I would like, you know, to see kind of.
I'd like to make a dollar.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to see kind of that glide path where saying, hey, we think we can take that to a $50,000 loss or $75,000 loss this year. And then, you know, in two years or whatever, we think we could get it to some kind of a break-even or a profit.
Yeah.
That's, that's all I'm kind of pointing toward.
We could certainly do that. We have not modeled to the extent of looking at where our payroll costs are going up and an estimate for food prices, you know? I mean, clearly, with this 208, we could multiply by an average cost and come up with a, a projected revenue. But then, I mean, truly, to get the expenses down, we'd have to project the 2% increase that the, the contract calls for this year. And then, make some type of forecast relative to food prices. Which was a little bit, not certain where we're going at this point.
Kim, how do you, how do you propose to address? You, you mentioned, you know, a first grader doesn't need as much food as, say, a fifth grader. So, how do you propose to address the elementary-level lunch?
So, what we have done next year is we're offering at, at the elementary level, they can purchase an extra main for a dollar. So, that is actually, last year, we only did it at the high school. And we're going to actually offer it to all levels at different price ranges.
So, do you have any, do you have any numbers as to how many kids took, you know, what we sold extra mains versus what we sold meals? So, I mean, is it 20% of the kids?
It took, it took a while to catch on. I don't have, I don't have numbers here in front of me. Because I, this was more of a general. But I, I can tell you that my feeling is, is that, especially if we're starting this at the lower grades, that that would carry over. We'll see more and more of that being, you know, taken advantage of. Which is really, you know, what we'd like to see them do versus buying a second lunch.
And, and with, you know, obviously, we're dealing with allergies. Kids have allergies. But is there no way that we can serve peanut butter in a manner that will protect the kids with allergies and still provide something other than sun butter that I know a lot of folks had objections about?
Um, that's really not a question. I, it's not really something that I can answer.
Yeah, I think that, to be fair to Kim, there's a way she can produce such a lunch. I think from day one, when the issue of food allergies, particularly the peanut allergies, came to the forefront, we have very, very active groups of parents, consulting experts and so on. And the belief is that it really, there's not a good way to protect kids as long as it's being served in our, in our lunchroom. Maybe we've made some modifications so that kids can bring it from home, set it at a designated table, so to speak. Make sure that table is cleaned first, among all the others. But because often, the allergy is not in ingestion. It's the oil and just being near. So, so, from a, a safety and politically sensitive aspect, I think that that would be very hard to sell to parents and to the principals who listen to all of that discussion very loud on both sides.
I have a child with a peanut allergy, so I can fill you in with more detail, especially at the elementary level.
I'm well aware.
Oh, it's not free, and it took me forever to find it.
Yeah. No, I'm well, well aware. My, my kids have friends and, you know, just asking the question.
I do think it's important to point out that, you know, there are, our free and reduced lunch is at about 3%. So, we don't have a natural incentive for kids to buy lunch. That, that incentive exists in many communities where 50, 60, even higher percentages of youngsters are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And that's a natural incentive. So, we have to really work hard to increase our percentage of participation because it's not, it's not a given in a community like this.
It's interesting, you know, when you look at the participation with having the POS, what you see is, you know, first, it starts off first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. It goes down. Ninth grade comes up a little bit. Tenth grade, it comes up a little bit. But for the most part, it levels off at like 10th grade. At the high school, it's more boys that buy lunch than the girls. So, I tend to menu items that will appeal. I tried, I tried to put a couple of different items that I thought might appeal to girls who would be concerned about what they were eating. And met with very low participation numbers, very low. That Caesar salad, I would buy that Caesar salad in a heartbeat. And that Caesar salad, I didn't even sell 70 that day. And I, it was, it was beautiful.
Kim, is it that the girls are bringing other things? Or they're just not eating or a combination?
I, I, my feeling is that it's, um, it's not cool to buy school lunch. There's a stigma, you know, if, that I've heard, if a girl is seen eating a school lunch, she's considered to be overweight. So, there's a, or, you know, so there's, there's a lot of, oh, what do I, how do I want to say this?
Social and peer pressure involved, yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of social and peer pressure when it comes to middle school and high school. And it's just about, if we can kind of turn this around as far as operationally, you know, I don't want it to come down to, I'm trying, you know, obviously, I have a fiscal, financial responsibility, and I acknowledge that. And, but, you know, when it comes down to, do I buy that fresh fruit? Or do I go with the canned fruit? I just want to ask you, how many of you have canned fruit in your handsets? Okay? So, they're not eating that at home. So, you know, they might not mind having it once in a while, you know? And certainly, when they're coming through the line, when you, because we are offer versus serve, I have to menu all five components of nutrition. But because we're offer versus serve, they only need to have three of the five on their tray. But one of those items has to be a serving of a fruit or a vegetable, a half-cup serving of a fruit or a vegetable. So, what we do is we, in order to be in compliance, you know, we keep fruit up by the register and hold, you know, and put it on their tray.
Impulse buy.
Yeah.
Impulse buy. Although, we did, over at these, this is how the, kind of the fruit kind of came on to be available for the schools, not to mention, someone else had mentioned it to me. But we set up the fruit bowls, and we set up the whole fruit right by the register. And so, and the kids who were coming by and getting milk would come by and they, they'd grab a banana and be like, cool, it's taking the banana. Love that. You know? So, I was like, okay. And the, the rule is, and all my staff is, is quite aware of that. You know, if a student comes through and gets lunch, and they want to come back, or, or they ask for seconds of a fruit or a vegetable, they, we are more than welcome to have it. Yeah. I, I've been at several cafeterias in the elementary schools where students have come back and said, I really liked the salad. Can I have another salad? Yeah, you're going to eat it? As long as you're going to eat it, you can have it. I just, there's been a lot of stuff gone into the compost.
I have children who bring lunch for the most part. But we do have accounts, and they do buy occasionally and starting to work on that. But they'll bring lunch from home, but then they'll buy fruit.
Yeah.
For 50 cents, they'll buy in addition to.
For 50 cents, you can't do that. You can't go to 7-Eleven and buy a piece of fruit for 50 cents.
So, what I hear is if you bring fruit from home, it gets bruised or crushed by the time lunchtime arrives? Which would lend why you would go and maybe buy a bit of it. Because then it could get all brown and.
Yeah, bananas and oranges and apples. That's what they like.
Just okay, bye, Nicole. If you don't mind, Dennis. A couple of questions. So, one of the questions I know that I asked you and John was about how much money, how much reimbursement do we get from the federal and the state government? And I just think we should share this with everybody and the people at home. It's about 100,000?
It's over 100,000.
Over 100,000?
Yeah, it's over 100,000.
Closer to 100 versus 200?
Uh, no, closer to 100, yeah, yeah.
So, at some point in the future, if regulations became burdensome or onerous for us, maybe we consider going a different way and not having to comply? I don't know. I mean, it's just, I think it's something to think about.
I, I think it's something to think about. But I, I, I really think that, I want to say that they have really learned their lesson as far as, you know, I, basically, the regulations are as, you know, I have to be within calories and, you know, sodium levels and so on and so forth. But they had limited in the beginning the amount of protein and grains that I could serve in a week. And it basically was, on average, two ounces a day at the high school. And just to give you perspective on what two ounces is, you can't go to McDonald's and get a two-ounce hamburger. So, you know, it's, it was virtually impossible and craziness what you had to do in order, you know, you virtually had to almost offer a no meat. And I couldn't offer a no meat because I had a minimum. I had to serve at least one ounce a day. So, I couldn't even do like, you know, a no meat Tuesday or something like that in order to save up my protein for the week and be able to offer a bigger protein item. So, you know, I can understand the kids' frustration. And I, I agree that, yes, we need to consume less protein and, and less grains as a whole, you know, as a culture in the United States. But, you know, just going through and changing it the way they did was just crazy.
And maybe lunchtime is not the best time of the day to do that.
No, you know, that, you know, they have so much time, and they, they want to go through the line real quick, and they want to like. and they want to like what they like.
Right.
I mean, let's face it, chicken nugget day is still like one of the highest participation days that, that we have. You know, and I do my best to serve the most helpful nutritious nugget that I can find that is the most tasty. You know, it's a whole grain, it's all white meat, it's baked, it's not fried. There are no fryolators in the schools. That seems to be, people seem to think that we have fryolators still. No, we haven't had fryolators in a long time.
Okay, so my last follow-up question, if there's one thing you could incorporate and you weren't worried about it being a budget issue, what, what would it be?
At the high school, I would make my own little like cafe with the deli bar. I would remove the deli bar from the cafeteria and make it almost like its own little Tedeschi's Food Shop with the deli bar, with the two units plus the snack bar, so that the kids could actually walk in and see stuff out and, you know, grab those items.
Like a retail kind of.
And almost more like a retail, because I think that that's what they would like.
Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have some questions coming. First, I'd like to compliment you on your communications. I think you've been very positive and forthcoming and you have a good attitude about making it fun. So that's very good. One comment on the middle school and the high school. I think one of the challenges is not the food offering, but the amount of time that they have to eat. And that their focus is on seeing their friends. It's not necessarily on, and it takes a lot of time to go through the line. And so there's that balance, I think, your idea of, you know, a grab and pick up so that it's faster to get your food and then make it to the table. To have that precious time to talk to your friends. My kids take lunch because, and, you know, I give them a fruit, it doesn't get bruised, but they don't want to waste time in line because they want to go talk to their friends.
Right, it's very so.
So I think that's part of the challenge now with the new middle school building and cafeteria hopefully will not be as densely populated. They can actually physically move a little easier. That may make up for some of, you know, that may help looking forward.
Yeah, I, I can't wait to have my new kitchen.
So I think, and I think that's one of the things with the high school girls too is, it's not that they're not eating, but a lot of them do bring lunch. Or they'll also, you know, if they forget their lunch, they'll get a yogurt, the quick grab stuff. So, you know.
Yeah, so one of the keys to that lunch, the lunch period is short and I, I couldn't agree more. They definitely want to get to their friends and their kids. And one of the answers to that is to have everybody get money on their account because when they do, those lines fly right by. When the money comes up to you in a ball, that's problematic and that slows everything down. They really, I mean, you know, you got to see how fast it goes when, oh, okay, you're all set. You know, all set, all set, and then you get the ball of money. So that slows it down. But the more kids that get involved with, you know, getting deposits on their account, I think that will help some of the time element. But I agree, there still will be a time element involved in standing in the line.
Now, as far as the pricing goes, when was the last time that you increased price? Because you only showed two.
Just before I came here.
Two thousand and eleven.
Fiscal, eleven?
For fiscal?
Fiscal twelve, so the fall of eleven, I think.
Yeah, for fiscal.
Yeah.
So that's fiscal twelve.
Fiscal twelve, fall of eleven.
Yeah, so twelve and thirteen, right, two years, yeah, two years, yes.
Two years, okay. All right, so, so you have not looked at if your participation was flat, but you, what the revenue would be using these new pricing, assuming your sales were flat? You don't, we don't know what that revenue difference is.
It's approximately like an eight percent increase. I mean, I, I did not, I didn't look at that this way because, I mean, because we're talking about all the à la cartes and everything, so we'd have to take an average of it.
Okay.
You know?
So that's something I, I'd like to see.
Yeah.
Ironically, in today's Wall Street Journal, there was a big article about how you can have smarter pricing. And.
In school lunches?
No, for any pricing, and a lot of it, it talks about when you raise your price, are you then, you know, outpricing yourself and do your sales go down? Or it talks about can you bundle some things to do more of a package program and get the margin in certain things? And I think this would be valuable information for all of us to read. But I am concerned of these prices going up. And are we starting to price ourselves out of people participating or buying lunch? And, you know, we've had, local taxes are going up again next year, state taxes are going up again, gas taxes are going up again, we just, you know, Kids in Action is going up, the sports fee is going up. And so now we're adding this. And I don't know, but are the families that use the service to buy lunch, are those working families that it's more time efficient in the morning to buy lunch than to make a lunch? And so is this going to impact them more? Or, you know, where's the impact going to be on who buys lunch? So I would like to get some more information about how this all, you know, what are the real revenue projections, where are we with sales? Which items do we increase as opposed to all of them? I, I'd like to think about this a little bit more.
I think you're saying, and John and I have spent many hours talking about just this situation. But it, it's difficult to, I, for instance, I cannot serve fish for school lunch in even schools, because they will not eat the fish that I can afford to buy to serve. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, I, I have to operate within the means and at the same time, I need to offer what these kids are used to and what they're accustomed to. I'm in direct competition with Panera Bread, Crow Point. You know, yes, I'm school lunch, but when those kids are coming through the line, those are the images that they have in their heads. That's what they see.
And I think you've proven that you've been doing a great job and that they're getting used to this new food as you, your sales are going up as the year goes on. And so I think focusing on the participation as opposed to complete cross-the-board pricing. I, I'm just, I'm really concerned with increasing pricing when you're, now you're on a trend of increasing participation and then increase the prices again. And, you know, I mean, for a high schooler, they're going to buy, as you say, buy all these things. Five bucks, seven bucks a day for lunch, for paying for food? I'm not gonna, I can't do that.
Some of them are, are spending.
Unless they're spending their own money. I mean, my kids won't spend their own money doing that. I don't know. That's why I wonder what are the numbers?
When you, when you say what are the numbers?
Or I guess I.
You know, I, I would think that, you know, participation will, I'm, I'm projecting a thirty percent participation for next year or two hundred and eight thousand meal, you know, two hundred and eight thousand meals. I think that's a reasonable goal for us to sort of, you know, start to strive towards. You know, and will that erase the entire deficit? No, it won't erase the entire deficit.
Well, I mean, again, it's kind of what I was talking about a while back. You know, it looks, based on what Kim said about, you know, pricing in terms of food costs, that the value proposition is still very good. For three dollars and twenty-five cents, you're not going to be able to provide at home a better lunch than what you're going to get at school unless you have also a grocery store that you buy from. On the other hand, you know, you could make the argument, you know, do we want to buy market share, if you will? You know, would it help us to reduce price with that increased participation? My sense is that people eat with their eyes. And if you put out a good product and you make it convenient for people, for kids, they're going to buy more. The difference between three dollars, three and a quarter is not the issue. Now, it may make sense from a pricing point of view to say, for five dollars, you can have two mains and the rest of the lunch, and that would make me a lot, so I can get four tacos and a lunch for five bucks? You know, that might be, so that could be an interesting way. But strictly as a value proposition, I don't see it as an issue. I do have, a number of people talk about the issue of time. And when I, when John was nice enough to take me to lunch to the high school last, last December, we talked about that, what holds up the line. And he said, "One of the things that really holds up the line is making change." So my suggestion is, because everybody believes that the world changes too fast, right? So I think we ought to implement a no change policy. And therefore, we don't give change. And it goes into their account. Whatever change they have goes into their account. And then they will build up money, they're not going to lose the money. I'm not saying we give five bucks and it's only three and a quarter and then, you know.
But that means they don't have an account in the first place if they're paying with cash.
They have to pay.
No, everybody has an account, Carol, it would just go right on their account.
So the point is that, and you know, sorry, probably day one, but you say, "Look, no change is coming to hang on November first," or whatever it is, okay? Your life is too complicated, we're going to make no change. And starting, you know, give them two months, that everybody would have to have an account and everybody would have to have a PIN number, and everybody would then have money in their account. I don't know, I'm not, I don't have a parent with kids in the schools. But I think that could be an interesting way to address the speed issue. It would, you would then buy this, buy two months or three months, however long you want to do. Everybody would have an account. And so if raised kids come by, you know, an apple and they give them a buck and instead of getting fifty cents back, they're going to have fifty cents in their account. And a couple of weeks, they're going to say, "Oh, Dad, I don't want lunch today."
But kids that pay with, high school kids that pay with their own money, they would not, that would not go.
I mean, it's, it's an interesting idea. I think you'd have to give Bank of America some credit because I think they came up with it a few years ago. But, but it's, it's not just, it's not just making change, right? Middle school has twenty-two minutes for lunch, okay? That's not going to change in the near future. So, you know, one of the things that e-School implemented, for instance, was having kids go to recess before they eat lunch. Because at the elementary level, everyone wants to rush, rush, rush to eat so they can go play, especially when the weather's nice, right? So some of them, sometimes they don't finish their lunch. Sometimes, you know, maybe they won't buy lunch and they'll just have fruit, I, I don't know. You know, obviously, most kids at the elementary level are bringing lunch. You know, there is, you know, a higher petition, participation rate at the elementary level than certainly at the middle school. But, you know, I don't know that the change issue alone is gonna, is gonna fix that. But, you know, this is a larger issue that we knew a year ago when we were going to implement the point-of-sale system. It was not going to get solved by just the point-of-sale system, right? We had to look at, you know, Kim improving, right? And I've eaten at the middle school and at the high school as well. And I've been there on salad days when they're making fresh salads or the calzone or whatever it is. So it's a combination of the point-of-sale system. It's the combination of, you know, introducing new foods to get participation up. But we can't continue to operate at a loss. And we can't, you know, we're not a business, so we can't not offer the lunch. So we have to find a way to continue to offer what we have to offer in a way that doesn't continue to hurt us financially while seeking to improve the program. So we knew we didn't, we didn't want to raise prices a year ago when we were looking at the point-of-sale system, but we knew a year hence, after a year of the point-of-sale under our belt, that we might have to look at an increase based on what the participation was. So this was not an unexpected situation. I think the fact that a hundred and eight thousand dollars in the hole was more than we probably anticipated. But I think that's a function of, you know, all the things happening at once. The point-of-sale system came in, but also the, the federal and, and state regulations about the size of the portions. So, you know, participation dropped off. Or we thought participation would increase with the point-of-sale system and it didn't. So I think we need to, we need to try some more things and the jury's still out.
Well, and the good news, it sounds like we did less worse than most people, right?
That's exactly it. It's not as bad as the other guys.
My, my conversation with some of my counterparts throughout the state of Massachusetts, those, you know, we didn't get hit that bad and I don't think that we got hit that bad because we were already taking steps to make those changes. And my, it turns out that Sharon, the town of Sharon, actually their participation went up. So I called her and I said, "What are you doing?" And she said, well, she had started about five years ago. She basically started doing the same things I had done. You know, I removed the snack room, she did away with all the unhealthy snacks and so on and so forth and started bringing in. So it has taken her four or five years to make this turnaround in order to get kids to really buy in to school lunch again. And unfortunately, it takes time.
Well, as I said earlier, I'd be interested, you know, again, not tonight, to, to talk about that glide path, whatever you want to call it, that says it's a hundred and eighteen today. We hope, you know, based on everything, it should be seventy or sixty or whatever next year. And then, you know, because we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. We don't want to say, "Hey, let's give up on this and, you know, go another way." Because, you know, I think we all know that getting kids to eat right is the answer for the obesity epidemic, you know, twenty years from now, right?
Any other questions?
Is there a way for the high school or the middle school kids to be able to buy with their own money?
Yeah.
Sure.
We take cash no matter who it comes from.
You do take cash?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. Everybody has an account de facto. So, because everybody has to use a PIN, so they de facto have an account. They can use cash, they can, they can put money on deposit.
No, but not at the point-of-sale.
Yes, yes. At the point-of-sale, they go there and they pay cash.
Yes.
But they still have to put their PIN in and then they just be, they're a cash-paying customer instead of a debit customer where boom, you're all set. So then that, that's where you have to make change or, you know, and the money doesn't come nice and neat, right? It comes in a ball, it comes in a ball.
Can you create, can you create two registers, one for the cash-paying kids and one for the PIN kids? And I think you will very fast see that kids move over to the PIN number.
Sounds like a pretty good idea, yeah.
Express line, right? There's a cash line and a cash line.
Make an express line.
I'm sorry, it's, we're being taped and with TV. So if you're gonna, if, and I recognize you, I'm happy to, Daniel, but we just need to have you come up and identify yourself for the TV and.
Okay. So, so I'm Daniel Adeskeyevich and I just had a comment about creating an express line. Because if the time is really an issue for the kids to get the lunch in a timely fashion at the school, then if we're trying to get the cash kids out of the habit of paying in cash, then create an express line.
I mean, I think there is, and I think there's an opportunity for something like that in the new middle school. And I think that's something you'll continue to look at as you look to evolve the program.
At, at Foster, because it was already being done, actually, all the money comes down to the cafeteria in the morning. And they take that money and they log it into the kid's account and they do not take any cash at lunch. And I had a couple of parents, we were kind of touring some couple of schools and we went to Foster and then we went to East. And even though East has a higher participation than that of Foster, that it was amazing how quick the line goes through when they, you know, when there's money already on the account.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Ed?
Kim, you mentioned the introduction of paper products of the meals. I'm assuming that's to replace the styrofoam?
Yes.
How has that impacted on, on recycling?
Well, all of the products that we have are compostable and recyclable. So at the high school, most of those platters, we try to get most of them into the compost. However, we produce too many for the compost bins to be able to shake. And that's something that I have been in touch with the Green Committee and they're kind of working on that. On what, on what products do. My, yes, it is the most responsible thing to do is to serve on, you know, a green product. But my big thing was that it looked horrible with the food on it. And when you got your pizza, it had imbibed flavor of the styrofoam on the pizza, so it wasn't doing anything for the product. So my big concern was it doesn't look appealing. So my big concern was, it doesn't look appealing, why would you eat it? So we made the change from the styrofoam over, and it just coincided nicely with what was going on with the Green Committee and the composting and all that.
Anything else from the committee?
I have a procedural question, not for you guys, but this is about fees, and we're being presented this in one meeting, and I really don't understand why it's not something the policy subcommittee is reviewing, and...
Sure. Liza?
Hi.
Fees are not the responsibility of the policy subcommittee. Couple of years ago, when the policy subcommittee didn't have much to do, Dot said, why don't you take a look at fees? Okay? So fees are not the responsibility of the subcommittee. In fact, this and other, perhaps, issues that are gonna be contentious, everyone's gonna wanna weigh in on. So it doesn't really make much sense to spend time going through a subcommittee process. And in fact, you were to raise, you invoked the athletic fee as an example, you talked about being concerned about the increase here, okay?
Yeah.
So when we went through the athletic fee increase, that was handled through the policy subcommittee. They were not asked to do it by the administration, they were not instructed or asked to do it by the chair of the school committee last year, they took it upon themselves, and that's fine, okay? And then when it came up, there was no basis for the increase recommendation, other than things cost more, okay? So I would suggest to you that that was probably a waste of time in policy subcommittee. It doesn't need to go through policy subcommittee procedurally, and it doesn't need, it's not a policy, it doesn't need to go through a two-meeting process, like the other policies that we approve formally in here. And, you know, I'm sure Dot would, would talk about, years ago, it was never handled through the policy subcommittee. Just because the last couple of years it happened to have been done that way, doesn't mean it has to be every time.
Well, we just met with Glenn Kuchar and talked about how policies and budget procedures, you know, are kind of overlapping, and that's the stor, history that I had experienced. And I would just, I don't know how much time this was spent on, if I feel like we should have a little more time to evaluate it.
Well, I think we had, Kim spends her whole day, every day, doing this job. She and John have spent a great deal of time working on this for the last year since the point-of-sale system was, was put into place last fall, and to prepare this presentation for us. And there's an administrative recommendation before us. That's the way our process works. The administration comes to us with a recommendation, we can ask questions, we can make comments, and then we take it up. And that's what we're looking to do tonight.
Yeah, and I mean, clearly, you know, going back to the training session, it's the school board's prerogative, in fact, our obligation, to make, take these recommendations and to act on it as a budgetary matter. And that's why it's here tonight. And I suppose if it got to the point where we said, geez, we need more information, we need this piece of date, or that piece of date, or whatever, there wouldn't be anything wrong with saying, you know, I don't think we've heard anything to say we wanted to wait till our next meeting to do it. We'd have to see that discussion. But I would kinda echo what Ray's saying, that, you know, if it's something that we're all gonna weigh in on, then it really, might as well do it, you know, at this meeting, you know, in the future, as opposed at a, at a policy meeting.
And I just add, and normally, we don't do this, so if a member that's not present, you don't get to vote unless you're here, we don't read statements into the record when you're not present. But Andy unfortunately was, couldn't make tonight, and it was the last minute thing that came up in his personal life that he had to deal with, and he sent an email to Dot. And just wanted to indicate that he didn't support a proposed fee increase, based on the information that he was provided thus far. But of course, he wasn't able to come tonight to hear the full presentation. Perhaps if he had been able to come, he would support it, I don't know the answer to that. But he did want the record to reflect that, and I thought I would share that, even though that's not typically what we do when someone's not present.
John, can I ask you a question? So if we go forward with this increase tonight, you could come back to us in January, perhaps, and give us an update on how participation's going? And, or, whatever increase we may or may not vote tonight, would not preclude you from maybe taking a look at the bundling concept that Liza mentioned earlier?
That's interesting.
To kind of look at that as we go forward? But this would put us, put the new prices in effect for the school year, we're not meeting until almost the end of August, can't wait till then to do this. And, but you could still then perhaps take a look at a bundling type of concept?
We certainly could, yes.
And move forward? I actually think this is a very modest increase, I've done some research online, and some school communities are charging 4 and 4.50 for their lunch, so I think this is very modest, and I think we should go forward.
And I also think, in terms of the bundling, just making the options understandable. You know, when you have a long list of, you can get this, and then add this for another price, and so on. I know that's how you have to price it out, but, but if it's possible to get a, the regular meal with a second main, you know, you say, that's the price of this, so that kids aren't in their minds saying, do I have enough change to add on a second main? So just some of the marketing and explaining the options may make things go faster, as well as kids having a better sense, gee, this is for five dollars, or whatever it is, I'm gonna get two main things, rather than just thinking of it as an add-on.
My, my big goal is to get them in the door. If I can get them in the door, then I'm gold. So I'm willing to, to take whatever marketing strategies that, because I'm not a marketing major, I would certainly take anybody's marketing ideas or thoughts, or, you know, in order to, you know, make it more appealing to the student bond. I would love for us to get to the, you know, you don't even wanna know visions I have in my head, because they're very grandiose. But, you know, I really, Don asked me when I went through the interview process, you know, we compared, it was a couple of school systems, because they are, they're like the top two in the, in the state. And he said, do you wanna be number three? And I said, no, I don't wanna be number three, and I don't wanna be number three in just the state, I wanna be number one in the country. I want people looking at Hingham and saying, I wanna go there. I want people to, you know, I want kids to say, I wanna eat there, that's where I wanna go. So, that's what I think.
I support this plan, and realize and thank the people that put the work in it. However, I feel we're penalizing the kids who are hungry, and that someone who's been hungry all his life, and is, makes a second lunch a habit, I don't support any increase on a second lunch.
But you understand that's gonna cost us more? Because the other, first lunch is reimbursable, the second lunch is not.
Well, yes, but I was gonna note here that the high lunch is 282.
Can I, so, and I think it's possible that, you know, the communication, like, I'm constantly telling Kim, you know, speaking to Kim, saying, okay, are we sure they understand what they can take when they go through this line? Because I go there to lunch myself, and I say, you know, I'll grab the main and stuff, and I'll say, can I have one of these? Boy, can I have one of these, yeah? You know, and I go out with like a full plate, and I'm full. So I mean, with that extra main, the extra main, if they bought the extra main, they can still take the extra vegetable, or the extra food if they want. I mean, what we're talking about on the second lunch is another milk. I mean, because almost, you know, if they bought the lunch with the extra, and this is communication, this is somehow we need to make sure that the kids understand, especially the ones that, you know, the really hungry ones, the high school ones, the middle school ones, or, you know, that if you buy this, and you buy this, you'll probably be full.
What if it only went up by a difference in what we're not reimbursed, 40 cents?
That's what I was...
That's what, that's what we did, right? We, 350 to 390 of the high school.
You're suggesting...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at...
But it wouldn't be a buster either. I mean, it wouldn't be a buster, we just, we thought we'd try to put a structure in which would...
Right now, 325, non-reimbursable second lunch, it's going up to 390. So that's more than 40 cents.
But it's gotta be 350.
But it's gonna be 350 this year.
We're proposing 350 for regular lunch.
40 cents.
So 350, if proposed.
Right, but it's really, but it's, but it's really going up...
That one's going up really, yes, 65, right?
It's going up...
Is it 60, 65? 65?
65, sorry, 65, right. It's going up 65, not just 40.
Yes, correct.
Just to make sure I understand, the 280... One time is that for real? Just make... The 280, but when you were showing cost, that was food cost only, right?
Yes, it doesn't...
There was no labor cost?
No.
No materials cost, or whatever? So...
No overhead, no, no.
No overhead. So at 282, again, I don't know what the numbers are, you're probably talking about a cost of three and a quarter, 330, I'm just guessing. So, you know, there's, there's significant other costs than just the food cost. Like I say, in a normal restaurant, food cost is about 30%.
And keep in mind, too, that we're expected to participate, to contribute to the cost of the health insurance for the employees here, and we can't do that on a loss. Okay? So if, you know, if this increase and the continued efforts of Kim to improve participation, and improve the quality of the offerings that we have, you know, don't work, and participation does not go up such that we're in the black, okay? And the food quality isn't increased or improved such that more kids are buying lunch and feel good about buying lunch, then maybe we have to look at something else, like Carol's suggesting about opting out of the reimbursement. I don't know.
If you're gonna take a beating...
Yeah.
On the second lunch, you don't take the beating until you sell the first one.
So, Ed, maybe to, one of the other odd things that John and I had spoken about was, we're trying to encourage them to get that extra meal, is really what we're trying to do. You know, trying to encourage them to get the value, and by, I think by marketing, you know, a bundle package, that that would encourage them, and then they would be satisfied and full. If they get the meal plus the extra, and then go back for a second, voila.
Right. Right. So we're looking at it as a difference between 350 and 390, so they pay 740, or they'll get five and a quarter, will get the regular meal, the extra, and take your extra vegetable and fruit, and have a good balanced meal. This is what we're trying, I mean, that's the thought behind what we're doing. It's not so much, you know, well, it's not so much getting that 40 cents back, is like, here, this is a disincentive for doing this, but here, this is where your value is, and thinking that they'll understand where value is, as they say, oh, 760, 5 and a quarter, I'm doing this 5 and a quarter thing. I would hope they get there, but it's trial and error.
That's true. I mean, I think there's a lot of good points being made, and what it does for me is, I'm extremely impressed with Kim and John's efforts here, and I think that we're all willing to agree, visit this when needed in the future. We're in a deficit, I mean, I don't think these are huge increases, and I'm very sensitive to what Ed said, but I'm willing to look at it again down the line, and we have to try something, and it seems like you guys have thought it out. I'm comfortable with your proposals, so...
Well, we have a recommendation by the administration, would someone like to make a motion that we adopt the recommend, recommended increases that the administration's proposed?
I move that we accept the recommended increases that's proposed by the administration.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Jen, you had your hand up before, did you wanna say something?
I have a question about... Jim Watson, 291 North Street. I'm just wondering, for the vegetarian and vegan kids, are there always a few meatlets of, you know, tofu, bean, cheese? It's a protein...
If somebody is, is a vegetarian, and they have vegetarian concerns, it wouldn't be difficult for us to, to fix the meal so that they could have an option.
Oh, so, and you mentioned pizza, which is cheese, or...
Cheese, yeah. So it depends on how vegetarian they are. I mean, if they're, if they're vegan...
It's harder, yeah.
It's harder. But interesting that you say that, because I was just looking at an ore product, and they had bean burgers, and that's something I'm gonna look into.
Because, you know, Taco Bell has the black bean burritos. There they are.
There they are.
I was astonished by the rigors of your offering.
Well, thank you.
When I was at high school, it was like that.
She comes from Los Angeles, Jen. I'm from Los Angeles.
I don't think I can afford it, because of both...
We will open this segment, and we'll have a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Thank you both very much for your time on this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, 5.3, as you know, for many, many years, Ropes and Gray has assisted us with counsel with respect to our negotiations with the unions. Peter Abbot is current counsel, has been with us about, what, 10, 12 years? Following Nelson Ross from Ropes and Gray, a long line of Ropes lawyers. Peter does a terrific job for us, we're currently working with him on negotiations for our educators contract, actually, we're meeting tomorrow. So what you have in your packets is a letter from Peter, representing an agreement for a retainer the coming year. It's consistent with what we paid in this past year. We did increase it the year before, because we found ourselves, after lengthy negotiations, needing to kind of be more fair. And it was an amount that hadn't been increased in a number of years, this is consistent with last year. And I believe it's an appropriate amount based on this past year, working with Peter without agenda.
In the budget.
And what is being carried in the budget as well.
And we're likely to encounter a much busier year this year than we did last year, you know, because we do have a number of contracts coming up for negotiations.
I just think we ought to put something here that eats in the cafeteria at least a couple of times a month. I'm not hung up on it.
Can I make a motion that we accept the retainer proposal? I have a letter dated July 3rd, 2013.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 5.4, is an update on the fields. And we'll talk about budget in a couple of minutes, I just wanted to kind of give an So Rad started working probably around the middle of June, around the 17th or so, that week?
Uh, yeah, I think it was, I think, I think it was, yeah, after, right, 19th, 20th. To get start getting mobilized, and dealing with all the mobilization issues.
And what, the two key things that they've been working on is the erection of the fence along the Downing Street border, the western property line, it has been completed, and stripping of, stripping of sod and screening of loam for repurposing, to the extent that we needed onsite, and then the delivery off-site to the DPW of the excess. The loam screening has been completed as of Friday. So they've screened everything that they need to repurpose onsite, that they'll use for the multipurpose field, or the baseball field, softball field, and common areas, walkways, things of that nature. And then there's an amount, an amount that, in the process of, once they began to screen the loam, and, and, you know, when you, when you dig up dirt, you come across old pipe, you come across baseballs, you come across all sorts of things that have been buried over the years. So it's gotta be screened to a, a, a size that is a nice... So it's gotta be screened to a, a, a size that is a nice fine mix, can be mixed with sand and reused and repurposed for, for baseball fields. Once that process began, we had some tests done, and determined that the quality of our loam is actually quite good, and less than three percent of it was actually at, at a level that required screening, particularly if we weren't, weren't gonna use it, it was just gonna be used off-site, excess, we didn't need to screen it at all. And, so, that was gonna translate into savings, potentially some savings in time, but certainly some savings in money, in, in the cost of, of, of loam screening. So they'd finished the screening process, we asked them to essentially issue a change order credit to us, so we'll be getting about twenty thousand dollars credit from the loam screening line item in the budget, which is great. They are currently discussing some changes in the drainage calculations, based on some tests that they just had done of the subgrading, subgrading area, and once that, the discussions with Mary Savage Dunham and the peer engineer are finished, hopefully in the next day or two, they'll begin the process of putting in the drainage components underneath the multipurpose field, and begin to, to build that infrastructure and work on the drainage components of the overall site. They'd already begun to, to install the underground drainage components in the far parking lot Couple other change orders that we have looked at, John authorized some, some very small tree removal that came up during the fence installation, Andy and Ed and I were aware of that at the time, and also, if you recall, the existing fence and turnstile that went through the concession to the old fence that needed to be demolished, and we're installing something new there, those were small, small amounts. Another change order that is a good positive, so, you know, the credit for the loam is positive. I, I sent around a couple pictures at your places, so, the one would be what looks like masonry columns, this is a, a picture of, and I have, I have some here for the audience if they want. This one too. This is an example of what, one of the entries, and actually, this is the, the team entry. If you recall, you know, when we looked at fencing, for those of you that were here, you know, we talked about the ornament of fencing, the ornamental gates, the masonry columns, we ended up value engineering the ornamental gates and fencing out, leaving us with the, the black vinyl chain link fencing and the stone masonry columns. And I had a discussion with Rob Delmonico of RAD, really asking him, "Rob, how can you help us find savings in this project?", right? Because we were still at a point in fundraising where we were looking at a shortfall. And he said, "Those masonry columns, you know, I don't see those in projects like this, and they don't really seem to fit when you've got now, you know, chain link fencing instead of ornamental fencing." So we took a look at that, and it made good sense, because that's an eighty thousand dollar item, there's eight columns, and they're being, Andy and Ed and I met and, and decided that it would be a good thing to, to bring back into the project, that value. Instead, we asked Gail to take a look at, what can we put in its place that would somehow call out the entrance, the gate, the gates, and it would be the three entrance gates, the two main ones, plus the team, with poles of some height, and I think they're gonna end up coming up with a twenty-four foot height, that we could fly banners or flags from, and somehow identify and call out the entrances. We haven't gotten exact numbers on the poles, it's an eighty thousand dollar credit we're getting on the masonry columns, the estimate so far from Gail on the poles is, is between three thousand and six thousand apiece, and we only need to replace six poles instead of eight, because there were two masonry columns at the beginning of the walkway at the far parking lot, kind of entering the walkway, decided we didn't really need those. In fact, we had forgotten that they were even in the design. So, replacing eight stone masonry columns with six poles, between three and six thousand dollars apiece, so anywhere between eight thousand and thirty-six thousand dollars, you know, so you're looking at a, a, you know, a credit in the, in the forty to fifty thousand dollar range, likely, when that, when that number comes in. So that's a good positive variance, when you couple that with the twenty thousand dollar in loam screening reduction, you know, we're putting money back into the project, which is a good thing. And you'll find, when we go over the numbers in a few minutes, that those, those estimated credits are reflected there, and they're still being processed as we speak.
So just, just looking at the picture here, it says, it says on the entry post, not flag poles.
Right, they're not, they're not flag poles per se, because they're not gonna be as high as flag poles typically are, typically are, and they, they call them entry posts. At first, he gave us an estimate for twenty feet high, and then we talked about it, and Andy had a, made a good point, that, you know, you really wanna be able to see something from maybe the parking lot, particularly if you're gonna fly flags or banners, you know, maybe each class could fly their, you know, class of twenty seventeen, or if we're playing capacity that week, we somehow over the years accumulate, and this is Ed's idea, the different flags from different towns, we play in the Patriot League, I don't know. Great idea.
Well, that was one of my questions, so, there may not be the height of flag poles, but they'll have the oppo.
The opportunity to hang banners, flags, something like that. So, so that's a, that's a good savings opportunity there, and I think it, it's a, it's a more appropriate look than the masonry columns would have ended up being with the chain link fencing.
So, so these two, the way this is pictured, for instance, would be back, it looks like by the bleachers, and this would be the, the track line there, right?
Yes.
Right? And then there's what, another set on the other end, right?
Yeah, well, there's two, there's a gate on either side, so by the concession, near the concession building, and then also on the parking lot, the close parking lot side, and then this is kind of tucked away closer to the school and the gym entrance, where the team would come in from the locker room. So, just Eric, you know, can you give us a rundown, so we can look at the concept? I just thought it would be helpful for you to visualize it.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, so, those would be the three locations that we're talking about?
Yep.
Using the same.
Yep, exactly. Another change order that we're looking at, and this will be a, a minor increase, maybe around seven thousand dollars, now that we're, and we're opening the bids for the concession building tomorrow, for the general contract bids tomorrow, now that we've had to redesign and rebid the concession building, it's on about a two-month delay from the rest of the project. So as a result, the building won't be done by the time the multipurpose field is ready for use, hopefully in perhaps early October. And, so, our hope is that we'll be able to use, we're in discussions with the town, to see what is going to be necessary in order to be able to use and operate that field without the concession building fully built and operational, and obviously, the issue of, you know, having the electrical installed and operational, because in the, in the building, or where the building is going to be, is necessary, because that's gonna operate the field. So, we asked Gail to come up with, you know, some way that we can have the electrical installed before the building is built, in a way where it doesn't have to be moved, and cost more money, and be an inconvenience, and have a separate, you know, location. So, the change order has to do with essentially a weatherproof cabinet, so it'll be installed on the slab where it's going to end up being, but in a weatherproof cabinet, so if, if in fact, at the time, the building is not completely enclosed, it'll be protected, and we'll be able to use the electrical, if we need to. So that's still being processed, I don't, I haven't even seen any documentation on that yet, that's still being processed. So there are a number of small change orders, tree removal, the fence demolition, the electrical cabinet, I think there's also a request for demolition of a, what I call the sidewalk to nowhere, if you, I think it used to lead to the old bleachers, if you can visualize it, it kind of starts halfway between the old concession building and where the old bleachers used to be, and there's a little portion of sidewalk, and it just, maybe it's about forty feet or so, and it's just there. And obviously, it can't stay there, because that's where new plan things are gonna go. So, a small change order to, to remove that, I haven't seen any documentation on that yet either, that was just requested. So some small things that have come up and are in process currently, had a, had a brief meeting with the guys from RAD this morning to talk about the loam, you know, they think everything's going terrifically, they feel really good about, about progress so far. As I said, the general contract bid opening for the concessions tomorrow, the subtrade bid opening was last Tuesday, generally, the numbers have come in lower, there's one fewer subtrade, we don't need HVAC, because we redesigned it to be a three-season building instead of a, a year-round building.
Right, weren't we getting an add alternate on the, so, to get the cost of, the option of adding the heating?
Really couldn't do it, you needed to have two different sets of plans drawn, because it's a very different building with the winterization, and Andy's aware of this, and he was in the meeting.
I talked to Andy about it, I don't know.
Because we couldn't do the masonry block, because like, when we changed the masonry block, or whatever the right terminology is, right?
Right.
There's no insulation.
The makeup of the building as a year-round building was with sheathing, and siding, and insulation, totally different makeup than it was without. So they would've had to do two separate plans, bid them both, so double the work and double the, the bid costs and time, just so we could get the number. You know, we have estimates as to what it might be, but it's not something you can just add on, kind of like a group of, or whatever.
I think I would ask that, and you find out in your subcommittee.
We did, we talked to Gail about it, 'cause we, I, I was, I was all, I mean, we fought hard to make it a year-round building, that was something that was very important to all three of us, and it just ended up making it too expensive, and in order to make this, you know, I think what, what people think is a more cost-effective or responsible design, that was something we had to.
And the other part that, that I found somewhat persuasive was that, asking a contractor to bid both versions is almost double the work for them too, and might scare off, it's not a huge project, so might scare off people that says, "Hey, look, I might have to spend forty hours doing this extra thing", and then most likely, it's never gonna happen.
And then, that's the athletic director, Margaret Connolly, she's aware of this?
She is.
The loss of the winterization?
So we did get, did get two cost estimates done for the building at the D U O, they were ballpark, close to the number we're carrying in the budget, and we're hoping that tomorrow's number is, is a nice low number. Let's see.
We should say two, Reg, just so that for the public, I know that when we announce that the bids will be opened at two tomorrow, I think people tend to think, well, at three o'clock, you can tell me how much the budget is going to be, and of course, there has to be that period review, and verifying, and checking references, and all of that, so, you know, we need that to move quickly, but it won't be tomorrow.
Right, we open the numbers, and then our engineer will look at the bids and make a determination that, you know, are, are really a recommendation based on, on its review, who is the lowest eligible and responsible bidder, and make a recommendation to us for, for award. And, let's see, we did have a, a meeting at the planning board tonight to discuss the scoreboard detail at a meeting that came up in June, they'd had some questions about location and detail, we answered those questions, we presented tonight, they actually took a favorable vote, but we're short a member, and it turns out, the vote they took is not the valid one, so, we're gonna have to go back in August and do it again. So that's okay, we, we don't really have the scoreboards in the plan right now for the baseball and softball fields, anyway, those were bid alternates that we ended up not electing at the time, but we do need to have them in the project at some point, so, because the contractor has to kind of plan for the infrastructure for them, and the planning board had questions, we said, "Okay, we'll come in, and if you have questions, we're happy to answer." So that's kind of where we are on construction progress, change orders I talked about, the concession bids.
Are we going to talk about a date for award meeting?
Yeah, we, we are gonna need to meet to award the bid, and we really can't wait to August twenty-second, because we're already behind. So the bid's gonna be open tomorrow, some folks are, I know, taking vacations, John is leaving Wednesday morning, Dot's gonna be away.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
July twenty-ninth.
Yeah, what, what we had looked at is potentially the twenty-ninth.
Presumably, it won't be a long meeting, right?
No, it would just be really to award the.
We didn't put any other items on it.
On the concession.
Reason I ask this, is it, it might be tough for me to get there, unless it's more like eight o'clock.
Okay, so we can do it at eight, for a half an hour?
Yeah.
Is eight o'clock work for next Monday night?
I'm flying in, and I'm doing it two forty-five, so as long as my plane is on time, I would be here.
Eddie, Paul?
Good.
All right, so.
So we'll make it at eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, July twenty-ninth, is that right? Should be brief.
Mm-hmm.
End of slash words.
Nothing we do is brief.
So I guess we can talk about where we are on budget, John's handed out a revised budget in a revised format, it kind of follows what our project manager on the middle school does for a budget in terms of format, so, he'll be filling in the committed items soon, 'cause obviously, some of these contracts have been awarded, but I think it's a nice way to break down and see where we are on numbers. These reflect current fundraising to date, including an additional thirty-five thousand dollar fundraising pledge that we secured about two weeks ago, and that payment will be made in August this year, which is great. This also contemplates the two credit change orders I talked about, just, just estimates what the twenty, the twenty thousand dollars for the loan we know, and I think, what are you having here for the other?
Fifty-two, fifty-two, eighty-two minus thirty, allowing for the six poles.
Right. But that number could be adjusted as soon as we get the, the exact amount of the credit. So where that puts us with, with fundraising to date, and by the way, fundraising, you know, folks have been doing a great job collecting as well, on folks that have pledged, and I think we're down to about, is it around sixty thousand?
Forty?
Forty thousand that we need to, no, to collect.
Oh.
The, the.
It's around sixty-seven thousand, so.
The outstanding amount is three fifty-five that we haven't collected yet, but, but we know we hit, you know, there's money coming in.
Right, right.
Oh, fifty?
Yeah.
So, John, the projected shortfall at this point, second page, is approximately forty thousand?
That's correct, yes.
Wow.
That takes into account the removal of the columns and the loam change order.
And that's assuming the concession happens, which is what we're carrying. Yeah.
So, assuming the concession comes in at five fifty or below, we had talked about, there was a certain time period where with the contingency, we felt confident, what was that timing? Because we could potentially be okay?
It's probably, yeah, it's probably in about a month. It's probably, yeah, it's probably in about a month when they actually get in the ground and start, you know, they're still, like I mentioned, they did some testing. The results came back on Friday of where the multi-bookers field is going to be, and the test came back that it wasn't potentially going to drain at the same rate that their model indicated. So, you know, they need to make some adjustments to that. So, things like that, they haven't stripped the baseball field yet, you know, for instance. So, I think in about a month.
And they cover the concession, too, so we do have to leave some money there for the concession as well, you know?
That's right. But yeah, so your point is a good one, that I think, you know, we will be at a point soon where we can look at possibly reducing the contingency by some amount. You know, we also could point to Fields Revolving Account, you know, to a small extent in the near term if we need to justify that in order to sign the contract. So, and I think if you look at the breakdowns of the accounts below, John's done a nice job of pointing out what's there and what's, what the status of that is. So, it took a while to get here, but it's exciting.
Getting there.
Yeah.
Major point to drive by both the middle school and the high school this afternoon. It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, it is.
The park, you have it, where you need to.
Oh, yeah.
That's crazy. Stop by me if you haven't yet. Very impressive.
So, that's where we are on budget. Any other points you wanted to make on the budget, John?
Nope, just the, you know, just so everybody sees that, you know, I have reduced the contingency by those asterisk items there because those were not anticipated, they were anticipated in the contingency. So, the contingency dropped by about thirteen thousand dollars. That's because we've identified other line items for them. But, you know, and those would be for, you know, the printing of the bid sets for the second concession. And then also, you know, as the planning board continues, we still get repair review charges. So, I've, you know, put a budget number in for those.
And when do the trees get planted along the new fence?
It'll probably be in the fall. Fall's a good time, September, October.
Yeah. We've actually postponed that. They were due to be put in in July, but it was too hot, so, you know, we talked to Rad and told him to postpone, and then when we had our department head meeting last week, we talked with Mary and, you know, said we'd like to hold off on those, and everybody sort of agreed that, you know, we don't want to plant those in this heat.
Yeah. The water bill to water them with makeup.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? Five point five, we have a homeschooling application. This is a repeat.
Yes, it is.
So, you've been given the materials in your packet. Unless anyone has any questions, I would entertain a motion.
Can you?
Can?
And students?
Yeah. Usually do. Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we consider approval of the homeschooling for Elizabeth and Patricia Breen for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen.
About a second.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion, all those in favor? All right. Thank you. Five point six, these were actually numbered wrong in your packet, but five point six is the PRS trip to Cape Cod Sea Camps, their annual trip, which is a great trip. Twice, two in a row. I got two girls coming, too. I said, maybe your mom would like to go. It's a great trip.
It's a great dad.
It's really tremendous. It's a really tremendous trip. Go and explore the cedar swamp and tidal flats and everything that Cape passed to offer. So, that's great.
I like this.
That's an overnight, we're getting notification on it because that's an overnight, so we go on Wednesday, come back on Friday. Five point seven is a second trip. That's, oh, right, that's the High Rock, the O M C A camp, to Mount Washington.
Yeah. And that's really preparatory, skills building and experiential trip for kids that will go on the next challenge, which I believe is to Japan. Speaking of Japan, you know, when the video went viral about the middle school and Roger's retirement, last week, I got a phone call in the afternoon from someone from Fuji TV in Japan. And actually, they were looking for hope from Roger. Roger was not, he'd taken a few days off, was not available, so they got me, and the man did speak English, but had quite an accent. However, he, the questions he asked were, was Mr. Bodie a teacher? Well, it's very hard to explain to someone who speaks a different language about industrial arts or what we now call industrial technology. I think it would've been easier explanation had he taught math or science or typing. But I finally ended up saying, do you know about woodworking? Yes, he didn't know about woodworking, and so I don't know what the quotes will be, and I don't know whether he would give Roger's approval, but I was working under a little bit of a disavantage, so.
Wow. Internet can be great.
Very fun.
Exactly. So, anyway, we're talking about the trip to Japan. Off topic.
That's all right. And then five point eight is another trip, the high school dance team that they've taken before, right?
Yes, they have.
The Orange Bowl.
Mm-hmm.
Great opportunity. Should be on TV, right? They show the halftime show.
It is, and if not, it's on YouTube.
Right.
I'm sure we'll see it more than once.
Five point nine through five point three are all appointments. Dot has been busy.
Involved and busy.
Right.
Of course, the directors and the principal do the screening and the interviewing. And these days, with school spring, we're getting hundreds of candidates in certain areas.
And allowing those appointees is a new assistant principal to the middle school. Let's see if we can say this right. Allison Genowitz?
Janu Lewis.
Janu Lewis. Say it again.
Janu.
Janu.
When she says it, click it. It sounds more like an A than a U.
Okay. So, we're not going to meet her at all.
We will. I didn't invite her to come tonight for two reasons. One, Roger took me, Garrett was on vacation, and the other is that we weren't quite sure when the meeting was going to really start and anything.
Oh.
Yeah.
But she's a delightful young woman. I think that people will really like her, and we're excited about it having her.
That's great. And, let's see, unknown items. No?
Yeah.
Okay. Before we get the subcommittees, it's not on here, but building committee report, I did want to give one because I haven't really given you much in a while. I thought I would just pass around these photos. So, just to give you some, I'd like to, just to give you some perspective, the first one is a photo taken a year ago when they began the aggregate pier installation. And then, you'll notice a photo of the gym, the gym entry, which is essentially the same view now. So, I'll pass these around. Those were taken about a week ago or so, two weeks ago. So, construction is going well, so you could, you drove by, it's remarkable, isn't it? They're really going gangbusters over there. So, based on our, the construction progress and our budget to date, they're about fifty-seven percent done with construction. Let's see where we are. You know, they're working on exterior materials, window installation has been done, they're now working on inside framing, and we are going to start looking at technology choices. The F F three meetings are ongoing with staff about, you know, choices of, you know, what makes sense in the rooms now that, you know, they've been designed, they're being constructed. Okay, well, this is what it's going to be. Well, we really need more whiteboard instead of this, or we need it over here instead of there, that kind of thing, in addition to, you know, furniture and whatnot. And keep in mind, we are going to reuse quite a bit of furniture from the old building. So, those meetings are ongoing. Construction is really going well, continues to track on time now and under budget. You know, our change orders are, I mean, it's a smallest amount. Mary Mahoney's never seen it on a project like this where the change orders have been such a small amount in comparison. It's really remarkable. You know, under a hundred thousand total change orders, two change orders that have been approved so far, and we've expended thirty million dollars. So, really pretty remarkable. You know, as you know, like we mentioned before, the town issued bonds, short-term bonds back in May at record percentages, so very inexpensive financing, which is, which is great. Let me just see if there's anything else I wanted to call out specifically. They've got all sorts of trades working on site currently. Masonry is ongoing. A lot of carpentry, interior carpentry, waterproofing, ceiling, roofing, drywall, you name it, it's going on. Mechanical ductwork, flooring has just begun in some areas. So, really, I think at some point, at some point in the fall, when the building's all enclosed, you know, there'll be so much going on, and you won't see it because of all the insides over there will be neat. I think the building community is going to try to meet at the new site, maybe in September.
There must be a lot going on because the parking lot looks really full around, you know, by the building side there.
Yeah.
There must be fifty cars there.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of.
Most of the trucks, I just think.
There's a lot.
And it changes all the time, so the issue of running quarries.
Quarries.
Is a huge, huge part of that project. Roger is doing them all now, but every time we have a change in a trade, take a trade, there may be forty more quarries that need to be run, similar at the Fields Project as well.
So, that's pretty much where we are in construction for the middle school. Bleachers are really neat. I've been by a number of times. It's really fun to see up close, you know, the stuff that you saw in design actually being built, and it looks like you thought it would. You know, it's like, wow, this is, it's really looking that way. And it's neat, too. You can see, because they're doing the mock-up wall at the same time, you know, the mock-up wall has every material that's in the actual building, so the windows, the brick, the stone, everything. So, it's kind of neat to, and they're keeping up with that, so you can see that go at the same time. That's pretty much all I have on that. Subcommittees, sour negotiations, we've met a number of times, right? You want to?
Well, I'll be great. We're ongoing, we have a council, an executive session, a meeting against more on the process.
Yes, the paraeducators that we've begun.
I'm not sure I do.
Not much to say.
Much else.
Yeah. There isn't a lot to say, yeah.
I'm sure I'm allowed to say anything else.
I don't think there are any other subcommittees. I think policy isn't meeting until August, right?
August twelfth.
Yeah. Dot, did you have something that you wanted to?
Several things. First of all, we saw the large number of new hires. I believe at this point that we have five remaining open positions. There are another three or four people that we've identified that I haven't yet met with, but we believe there are five more positions, and not easy ones to fill, so we continue to work at that. However, I heard just Friday that we may be having yet another resignation. This is one of a young person who's going to, is at least interested in working closer to home, so that would be a six one to fill. But given that we're not quite at August one and that we're as fully hired at this point as we are, I think is a good, is a good thing. I think the total number of new teachers is going to be thirty-five, which is the largest number that we've had in a long time.
And maybe a half.
It was twenty-seven, right?
Yes. Well, this is, yes, it was higher last year than it had been for several years before, and then this year, and it's a little bit of everything. You know, people say, well, we must've had way more retirements. Well, no, we had a few more retirements, we had a few more resignations, we had a few more people taking a full leave, and we did have some new positions as well. So, that combination that has, that has bumped it up there. What's daunting, of course, for me and for Ellen, is looking at all that we've put into professional development over the last several years, whether it be around getting ready for educator evaluation or for Common Core or for, you know, thinking of Pow Park. So, all of that experience has locked out the door. Now, some of those folks will come back, the people taking leave of absence will return, so it's not lost, but the professional development piece just has to be ongoing and has a cost, both in terms of time and in terms of dollars. But in any event, I do have just a summary sheet on each of the employees. I always bring it with me if anyone wanted to take a look at it, so you can look at those. I will provide something for you with respect to the new assistant principal at the middle school. With respect to enrollment, we do the enrollment every two weeks, and these are still projections, of course. Things will continue to change, but you can see that the elementary has grown. When we did our first projection, our elementary is actually a little bit under where we are the current year, but we continue to grow there. So, we're now at two thousand fifty-eight students projected for K through, K through five, and that's up sixteen from last year. And as you begin to look at this chart, as we move forward, it would be easy to say, well, why didn't you take the teacher that's in the fourth grade here and move that person to the fifth grade somewhere else? Remember that we had a starting point that didn't look like this. So, while in some cases, it's very good balance, in other cases, there are class sizes that aren't particularly where we want them to be. And for me, at the elementary level, you know, the average is still twenty-two, twenty-one point nine, so that's a good average, but there are some grade levels where fourth grade would be one in a couple of our buildings. The fifth grade is another one. Larger classes, larger class sizes overall at East School. Kindergarten, Debbie and I had a long talk about whether or not we would add a fourth kindergarten at Foster School because of the numbers there, you know, starting out at twenty-two or twenty-three at this point, despite, but we looked at all the pros and cons of doing that, which included things like space, about things like having to change the sessions, and kindergarten parents already know what session they're going to attend, and if we added a section, then that would change somewhat, that could be disruptive. And we don't have an integrated kindergarten there, so that's another factor that we don't have a large number of children with special needs. That would suggest a smaller, a smaller class as we do at Plymouth River. So, we did decline to add an additional half position or additional kindergarten, but it's good that we have that option, that we say we'll make our final decisions by April, by August one. We did have the discussion and decided we would not do that.
Look how south turned out, right? Turned out okay.
Well, we added the one additional class that we. Well, we added, the, the one additional class that we budgeted went to South for the fourth, for the second grade. And you can see, had you not done that and put that class there, that would have been three at twenty-six and twenty-seven, and not the second grade.
Yeah, right.
So that was a good choice, even though there's, you know, quite a variance there. So on the back side are the secondary ones. Oh, the other thing I want to point out about the front side is one of these things that patterns seem to change all the time. And what is a pattern one day isn't another. So we have grade one projected at two ninety-nine. That's a net increase of forty-three over last year. But last year, we had our smallest kindergarten in a long, long, long time. But that grade one is our smallest. It's an under three hundred grade one. So that's smaller than we've had in a number of years. So one might think, well, gee, that's beginning of a, of a trend, of a downturn. But then you look at kindergarten, we have two hundred and ninety-five youngsters in kindergarten, and that's an increase of thirty-nine from the current year. So, you know, it really takes a lot of patience and a number of years to determine what, what are trends and what are not. On the back side...
I was going to say, just a observation is that, you know, you see here, and you really get it in spades, that what I see with a lot of organizations, you know, it's a step situation. You can't add, you can't say, okay, in, in grade four at the PRS will put in half a, half a teacher.
Right.
You know, so you go from three to twenty-five to, to four at, you know, eighteen.
Right, yeah.
You know, something like that.
And it's a good point, because those are exactly the choices that we have to make. And if you say, well, if we had one more teacher, we could put the teacher where, in one of those boxes, and would impact the classes in that building at that grade level, but nothing else. So, so we get the balance that we can get at grade, at the first part of May. And then we look at it again about this time of year and say, do we really want to, you know, fight for another position or not? And what are the positives and minuses? And there are always both, so. So on the back, the middle school and the high school, you can see there, we're looking at an increase of ten students for the middle school. And then if you go back to the front side and look at the size of those two classes in grades four and five, when we opened that middle school, we've always known that we would be on peak and expected. The high school growing by twenty-nine. And I know that some folks, and Andy has mentioned this many times, have been very concerned about the high school growth because you tend to think that those numbers of well over three hundred that exist in the middle school are all going to move into the high school. And of course, that's not true, that we do have drop-off youngsters going to private school. And of course, now, at the middle school level, we have youngsters who go off to BC High. BC High and Notre Dame are our two biggest private schools. And that's, that's a grade seven. And so I don't think we have any more youngsters total who go to those two schools. But right now, they go earlier for BC High. And that will be the case for Notre Dame as well because, as, as you know from the press, they're opening a, a grade seven program as of the next school year, Y fourteen. That's the same year that, of course, our middle school opened. So that may have some impact on the total enrollment. And so if you look at the total, fifty-five net increase. And we've been averaging over the last ten to twelve years about a sixty student increase from one year to the next. So nothing terribly shocking, but I do think that kindergarten grade one thing is going to continue to perplex us as we think about what our next steps are, both in terms of buildings and programs and other things as well. I did want to mention that we had a superintendent school committee goal this year, which was to develop a technology plan and report. And we've had a planning committee that's met a number of times. I know there's been some interest and some questions about where we are on that. Final report I intend to bring to you at the first meeting in September. And the thinking about when we would do the final report was in time to have some discussion about things that might impact the coming budget year. So presumably, when we meet, and hopefully in September sometime, or a school committee planning meeting, this would be one of the major topics of discussion. So what I've included here is strictly a draft. And even since I did this, some members of the committee have added some other ideas. So this is really just a summary of some of the points of consensus. Most of those points will develop into some sort of a recommendation or a proposal. I think we're thinking ahead to a timeframe of about a three-year plan with respect to technology. That's probably as far out as we, as we want to think about going. But the components of it include not just what we're going to buy, but what we're going to need and want and what use we will put the technologies to. And that needs to be guided by a philosophy. So, so we have a schema, if you will, for developing a philosophy about that. But, but in addition, we have to think very clearly about infrastructure. In fact, that's where we're starting, the infrastructure things, which includes wireless access, and it includes capacity, bandwidth that would allow multiple users simultaneous. It includes looking at our phone system. There is some work happening on the phone system at this building and three of our elementary schools that are tied into that in the, in the coming year. But where we want to be with that has to do with looking at things like software and, and applications. And of course, one of the first things that we really need to get under our belt is what's going to happen at the middle school because those plans have to be implemented in the coming year and not just talked about. So there will be a full report, but this is just to kind of give you the flavor of the, of the kinds of things we've been talking about. And so the two documents you have here are points of consensus that I think as we sat around the table and talked, we all agreed with, although, as I mentioned a minute ago, there were some new things there as well. And then some of the factors that impact our planning and our decision-making. So it's simply FYI. We have some good background things to put in the report as well. We've done a lot of research. Members of the committee have gone to lots of conferences. We've visited and communicated with other schools. So a lot of reaching out and exploring. But also, as part of a grant project that we were involved with, with the North River Collaborative, there was actually a technology assessment done for all of the schools in that collaborative. It's fairly thick report, and that will become part of the report that we'll share with you as well. So if anyone has any questions or wants to see me individually afterwards, that would be fine, too.
If you don't come on, I would have to sit. I suppose Ray's comments earlier about the whole subcommittees and the whole committee, whatever, you know, this has been a focus of long-range planning in the past. And I've had some discussions about whether we should have a, you know, a meeting or so of long-range planning discuss this. And at this point, I'm kind of persuaded that I think it's going to be enough. People are going to want to weigh in on this idea of what technology will look like for the next two or three years, that it probably wouldn't be the best use of time to have that discussion because I think everybody here really needs to be part of that discussion. So unless people disagree with that approach, we probably will not have a long-range planning, I'm not, we're not planning to call a long-range planning meeting to discuss this prior to when everybody discusses a planning meeting.
I think that's a good point.
We need to do that afterward, but...
You know, as we talk about some of these big things that are going to be coming up, everyone is going to want to weigh in. So there's a duplicative effort, and we're trying to streamline and be more efficient about what we do, that there are, there are certain things that are best done with everybody at the table. And particularly in this case, where likely we would be talking about some of these big ideas at a planning session, you know, it'd probably be in the agenda of four prior items, and I would think this would be on it. And so that will be an additional opportunity for time to be spent on it for people to weigh in.
I'd just like to say, I think it's great that, Dot, you provided this so far in advance so we get a sense of what your thinking is. Fortunately, Dot invited me to sit in on two of their meetings. So I personally have a little sense of where they're going. And I think they've done a really great job thinking it through. But so I think on these, these big issues, that we have as much information far in advance so we can have the time to flush it out is helpful.
And I don't disagree with that at all. We've just been overwhelmed with things more recently, and so we're always pushing at the last minute. And hopefully, once we get these projects off our plate, then we can resume to a more normal schedule of things. I was just thinking today that here we are in July, and we, I don't think, have had a normal school committee meeting since November that went on, on the date schedules, at the time scheduled, with the agenda that was scheduled, or that wasn't even canceled. And that has been a particular challenge because, as you know, the planning board meetings are always on Monday. And so many times through this, we've had to jump around. So we're optimistic that we can get back.
However, in this case, I think you guys do, should take some credit for the fact that we are here. You know, we talked about this at our planning meeting last year. And now, ten months or eleven months later, we have something that we're looking at that we're seeing six or eight weeks in advance to be noodling about whatever. So, you know, I know, I recognize it's difficult and it's, you know, I know that I occasionally can be guilty of being somewhat demanding and trying to get ahead of these things. So I want to give you a compliment on the fact that I think we are ahead of it.
Yeah. I'm sure we like your progress. It isn't always the style with which we'd like to do things, but it is what it is. I did give some thought to, because of this, this assessment that was done through the, the author of a project, whether I would share that because it's fairly thick to read. But then I thought, well, if we just shared that without the report and the rest of the plan, then people have a zillion questions on that that are out of context. So, so I think I'll include it as part of the thing, but, but that is longer.
We don't need executive session this evening unless there's anything else. I would take the motion to adjourn, remembering that we are meeting again next Monday evening, eight P M here. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.